And we'll put that in.
Thank you. Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
In attendance, we have Carol, Ed, uh, myself, and do we have Doug online?
I'm online.
Okay, so I need a motion for a.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Have a motion and. Do we have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So we'll go ahead and um, do the budget discussions you want to present it or Laura? Okay, go ahead.
So the point of the, good afternoon, point of this workshop today is to get some feedback from the board of supervisors on budget initiatives that you all would like to see for next year. The one item that we did provide in the packet is kind of a summary overview of our funds and where we're at to date. Steven Bloom was able to provide that uh, for this packet. But this initiatives kind of discussion is more of um, any ideas, plans, or any of the items that you'd like for the district to work on or have for next year. For example, special events, what else did we talk about landscaping items? Any, mainly any general fund item, but if there are enterprise fund items that you'd like for us to kind of put in the budget for next year for either sign or construction that's not already underway, uh, this would be the opportunity to bring it up, or if you have ideas that you'd like us, the point in this is we're in budget. And in order to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars, we want to get estimates if you have, example, if you want to replace a chair, then we'll get estimates on the cost of replacing the chair. So that way, we can have that for the budget discussion. So with that, that's, have anything to add to that? That's just the general notion of this meeting initiatives that you guys meet next year. Is that done?
Can I, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Um, the administrative building, that contract wants, what it's going to be for furniture and everything, everything on the inside, right?
We put a budget line item in the um, engineer's opinion of probable cost for furnitures, fixtures, and equipment. Um, we'll probably end up doing like, equipment and furniture, purchase ourself just because of the cost savings.
Sure.
Um, but the actual like, there's cabinetry and things like that, that would be as part of letting.
Okay, and I know because I asked last time if there was a figure in there for landscaping, and there was, but again, there's no landscape plan or anything like that.
There was, I think it was just sod, I don't know if we had um, planting, like actual trees.
Well, thanks, but there isn't like a master landscaping.
Okay, and once, once we have the contract, and so it'll be sometime next year when the building is actually done. It'll be done next year, right?
Yes.
Okay, is there a way that we could add a little money into this year's budget to make uh, the surroundings uh, more park-like, if that's a word? Maybe add some, I don't know, picnic tables or something like that, so that when it's done, it isn't just minimal landscaping, it looks really nice. We have, you know, a very nice building that fits into, but also give it some community flavor to it, you know?
So we have minimum requirements for the DO that we have to get from the county landscaping requirements, but if there's additional enhancements that the board would like us to do, um, we could, we could absolutely, absolutely do that and put the funding in there.
I mean, I was thinking maybe just, I don't know, I don't, I don't know what, but something to give it a more community flavor and not just have it sitting there by itself with some little bushes around it.
So I, I, I will say, where we have the bond, we have funding for parks and rec amenities in the bond, that we had an idea of what they would be spent on, but we, we don't, we haven't, you know, ironed out that plan. But if the board would wish to put funding aside from the, the non-abalorum assessment, they could.
You know, I think what might be a good idea is phase one is the administrative building, phase two is what we need to define. Uh, and it could be as simple as, you know, uh, Carol, what you're speaking to is uh, maybe some minor things like a walking path around the perimeter, re-sodding, you know, the, the area that's undeveloped to um, just a, just a nicer open field and maybe some landscaping picnic tables. Um, maybe there's like a phase two, a minimal phase two.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to make it more.
Park-like, so you don't have an administrative building, a pool, and a big dump field.
Like, but, but community, like inviting, you know, so you don't have to go inside the building, but if you walk past it, if you want to sit down on a bench, I don't, I don't know, just something that would make it feel like it's part of the community, not just a building that looks real nice set off by itself.
That would probably be a good task for the park committee. Like, what is the, what are the, apart from the administrative building, what are primary essentials that we could discuss as part of a phase two plan? Something that is, you know, to, to meet, let, let's say sixty percent of the, sixty or eighty percent of the gateway population, like multi, multi-use things, like that don't cost a lot, like just an open, a nice grass open field or a walking path, or if we wanted to put in, you know, a couple pickleball courts, or just something that's, you know, or playground, or just like, I don't want to dive back into the whole redesign of the park, but you know, how do we get it from an administrative building, a pool, and then a big dump area to at least something where people can utilize it even if it's not fully developed or fully realized?
Yes. Thank you for putting much nicer words in my mouth. I just wanted it to feel like part of the community, not necessarily just a building by itself.
Well, I, I think the question is to the other board members, does that seem reasonable to, you know, administrative building, and then are there some primary essentials that we could all agree on that are non-controversial maybe, that would make the park accessible, make it a park, but not, you know, fully developed like we would, like our original plan was? Is, is anybody else have any input on that?
I have some, but you have some, Ed?
The only thing I'm doing is I'm, I'm worried about the cost coming in as it is, let alone adding costs. This thing is absolutely just growing in cost, scares me to death. Grass, I think would be, a park is grass. So the more grass, the better I think it would look. You can always come back and put in some bushes and plantings to uh, trim it up, make it look fairly nice from the street, street appeal, but uh, I'm more worried about the money.
Yeah, well, that's what I was thinking, Ed, like, you know, that area that we've, the, the area not being reused, that is just terrible grass there. Like, if, if nothing else, we just put nice sod on it, put a walking park around it, and if you put a couple picnic tables, at least it's, it's functional. People go out there, they can walk around, you can picnic, and we don't have to build any, you know, any, you know, expensive features right now. Like, we're just trying to get it to the next level, which, which, Carol, to your point, it becomes a park then, not just an administrative building, a pool, and then a vacant lot.
Right. So I will tell you, the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee meets tomorrow to discuss um, their ideas. So I can give that feedback to them.
So to me, what I'll, it's in line with what Carol says, but with caution. Um, I was trying to pull up the, the design actually on the, not that we're going with that, but just pulling up the original design. And I remember one of the items uh, that he touched on was the landscaping, uh, almost like a buffer, nothing to do with the DO, a buffer around because that would protect for sound and noise from, you know, the adjacent communities, which we have too there. Um, I think uh, Eagle Point would be the one that's be probably more impacted because of the water, the sound would travel. So I, I don't see anything wrong with grass, and, and then only after looking at the DO and seeing what the requirements are, because the only reason why is because I remember looking at the, at the school and the requirements for DO, depending on the height of the building, how much surface at the end of the, the, the expected project will be, it's how much uh, trees you're going to need. So then I guess that would be my question to Tetra Tech, are, is it the DO is going to be looking at only at the admin building and the requirements to meet there? Because I know that the bigger the parking lot, then the more mature trees and canopy trees you need to do. So if the county is going to be looking at the whole area as a full development at one point, then I think we'll be fine because it's going to be a lot.
So I, I can touch on that. We submitted our DO application just this week, um, but based on our preliminary meeting that we had with the county, I'll, I'll use the sidewalk as a, as an example, they were only going to make us put the sidewalk along Gateway Boulevard just in front of where the building, the, the new part, they weren't going to make us do the whole thing. So until we get the first review, um, I would, I, I'm assuming that they're going to make us meet the requirements just for the new construction, not for the massive site.
So they're going to direct the sidewalk traffic back to the Hampton Park entrance and cross over to the other side?
Yes.
So, so then I guess I'll be in line with sod, and then um, and then maybe somewhat of a buffer, because I don't think the goal is to fence the area anyways, I think it would look, it would look nice. So I think it will even cheaper to getting some, like, somewhat trees, by the time we start building, three, four years down the road, or five years, there'll be somewhat mature and covering up the construction. So that's what I would go for. I would go definitely for sod and then landscaping around it, but that's, and the rest, I'll let Parks and Rec.
Well, you can do an awful lot with lighting too. So maybe something to, along the access into it.
Yeah, agree with that.
Decorated light or something like that.
Yeah, because that's like, go ahead, Doug.
I was gonna say, to Ed's point there, we should probably look at our FPNL lighting plan and add additional scope for the, for the park and administrative area, if it's not already included.
We did reach out, um, we originally, Tetra Tech had originally planned on having the lights be privately owned, but I asked, I said, hey, FPLs, we're going to be converting to everything else, FPL, can we ask them if they'll do the parking lot and the driveway? And so Tetra Tech's working with FPL representatives on that.
Yeah, the only issue you got on that is to get the approvals, somebody's going to sign the plans, FPL don't sign plans. That's an issue we ran into in the past. Okay.
But, and also when you're dealing with a public building, um, I don't think you can have too much lighting. Lighting is really important. Safety, security, all that sort of stuff, but just a well-lit building usually stays nice and intact.
All around the building too.
All around the building.
All around the building.
Do you get that?
Yep, I got notes on that.
Okay. That's all I have.
What did the budget? Uh, now, are we talking right now just oh, oh, one?
Anything, any type of initiatives that you guys would like to talk, so then we have to.
The one thing I'd like to see uh, is take the current plan we've got, 2023, and show the 2023 budget, show all these items, and any additional that you see that we're going to need to add, staffing or whatever. And if nothing else, just put lines in so that we can add stuff if we see in a category that we would want to deal, like, again, the staff, you want to have lines for additional deals. We aren't squeezing it in between. Then I would like to see, line shows the actual 2023 budget, then show the year-to-date projection, so that we get an idea of where we're at, to know if we're in for something that really is going to require necessitate some discussion of.
I was gonna say, I think Laura had one, like.
They blow it out.
Yeah, and then, yeah, well, I'd like to, instead of actual, you can have the actuals through March 23, but then put, then make another column that's projected year-end.
It's there, it's just hidden.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's the kind of thing, and then.
What we've done, like.
And yeah, have the notes, and then I'll then go down to like line 130, uh, miscellaneous maintenance, just as an example, right there. Put in three blank lines, just three lines.
Oh, to add.
To add.
Write it in.
Yeah, hang where we can handwrite in, and you don't have to go through and scribble in between the lines. So have plenty of room to where you can do that. Then all of a sudden, we can start figuring out where we're going, but this form here that you sent out, everybody got, I was a little confused by that. I went just taking, for example, because it was easy to find, Stony Brook Fund, uh, under the total revenue by fund, 532-916. I mean, you go right here to that, and it's right there, you can see it. But then go down in the one below, total expenses by uh, fund, Stony Brook 588-916. I looked all over and I can't find that number. Where did that come from?
Okay.
Where did that 588-916, I would have thought that that number would have been the same as up above, that the expenses we always balance with the, with the revenue.
They may have transferred funding and from their reserves.
They did, it was.
That's an amended budget, if you notice.
Um, there were some changes that were made to the budget, um, so that's what, that's why that doesn't match. If you notice, the header says amended budget. So there were some small changes that were made. There were some, especially in Pelican, where there were things that were moved from reserves.
Okay, so.
They put the general fund and the enterprise fund.
Let me find Stony Brook, there it is. So what you're saying then is, is that there is an amendment to this 2023 budget that shows, instead of 532, we're at 588 in expenses, whatever that number was. Yeah, 588. What, what do we have, what, what do I have that I'm missing, that I forgot about, that shows an increase in that budget of $50,000?
I'll, I'll request that from Steven, it should be.
Is that the March financials, or is that the original budget?
No, that's.
It's the original approved budget.
Here, the original budget was 532.
But it should be shown.
But you won't, it won't show you.
Well, my real point is, is that when you're doing that form you were doing, somewhere that 58,000's got to pop up. It's either an additional line item, or things that were within the line items were changed that were in the budget. And I don't, I just don't recall a meeting to where we said, go back mid-year and change the budget. I don't remember that.
Neither, okay, I'm.
But because that was only two sheets, I, I checked that one, I didn't even look at the other.
What is it?
532-916, and that is correct, off the budget, uh, the first, uh, version number three.
Which is, well, if you look at your annual, on your financials for March, that's what your annual budget is, and it's not amended, so.
No.
And then I've got 532-916 under the expenses, and then I thought, well, maybe there was another version. I went through everything I had, and I didn't see anything. So if there was an amendment, which happens, somewhere along the line, we need to see what generated that $50,000.
We'll follow back up.
Because I don't see it.
It is.
But, but that just, that is, that just hits the, the, the top, that again, you're 10, 20,000 feet. Every one of our accounts, oh, oh, one, oh, two, oh, oh, four, five, and four, oh, oh, four, oh, oh, five, oh, oh, six, and four hundred, that same idea, where you can see what it was, see what it looks like it's going to be at the end of the year, and then we can start fiddling around with it on things that we know that may, that we may want to add on each one of those. May come out that we got a bunch of extra lines that we have to consolidate, so big deal. But at least it's a place that we can write in. But, and then the other one is, is that the Manning table that you put out, that I looked all over for an hour before I came over, I couldn't find the damn thing. Uh, I think you sent it out, Laura, didn't you, to us?
The working safety.
Other version, yeah. I wanted, before we even go early, any further with this, I want to get that Manning table completely, we have an agreement of what we need, what we want, what we're going to include in 2024, and better yet, looking at what these salaries are for not only the top positions, but all positions, and get that addressed right off the bat.
So, Ed, is this what you're talking about?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So that's where it is, it was over here, it was my house.
Do you have any?
No.
Carol had it.
I've got it buried, I, I didn't, I didn't find, I've got it somewhere. I was doing filing, and I think I got carried away.
Can I touch on that real quick? So we've, I've, I've been working on the staffing template this week. Um, I did a bunch of comps, Doug actually helped and provided some comps as well, salary comps. Um, understanding that uh, we'll, we'll get all of that information to you guys. Our plan is to have a draft budget to you all at the May 18th meeting. Um, expecting you guys to have a lot of questions, but we've been doing a lot of work on it. Staff has been working on the actual O and M. Um, we've got, I think, the bond stuff, the capital stuff, and the staffing, at least staying there close to ready to be presented to you all, but um, we've, we've done a lot of homework for the last couple of weeks.
Okay, and the other one that we've done, that I would like to have a little bit more uh, thought in, is these, as you know, we're under a new system now uh, for the uh, handling of the assessments, the methodology. And it is critical in that, that we put apples with apples and oranges with oranges. One of the big things that we've had issues with, and people have brought up, is this assignment of time and percentage of time. Uh, Laura, can you go back to where you had this at the beginning, because I saw a column that had to do with staffing, and then there was a parentheses and percentages. Now, it's in the, the budgeting deal.
Okay.
There you go, there you go, there's an example, right there. This is just a simple one, where you got administrative assistant, offices administrator, and public works director. Every one of these is, in my opinion, should start out that unless it is just intuitively obvious, that everybody that's in that deal is 100% that. There should be this same presentation, because that's, this is big bucks. We need to take and make sure we got the accountability on this. I don't know how these numbers have ever been done. Do we keep timesheets that we can go back and audit a timesheet? For example, a staff person, or a, a utility person, that let's say goes both ways, they're doing oh, oh, one, a storm sewer work, and they're also working utility. We don't have, I've.
So what I've done.
How do we handle that?
So I think from a management standpoint, from your, from your salaried staff, I mean, I, I have my calendar, Laura has her calendars, we can gauge based on our meetings historic, like the last year, how our time has been split. I have asked specifically the public works department, um, over the last three months to Parks and Rec and, and landscape um, to track their, their time, at the end of each week, you know, estimate their time um, and keep track of that. So we have at least hopefully three months' worth of data.
Well, keep in mind, we have those four, I think it's four, methodology uh, uh, categories that uh, Russ put together. We need to go through those and make sure that we've got the work activities that create dollar values to go this way or go this way are correct, because salaries are the, a huge component of that. Your time and, as top management time is the toughest one. Is you got to sit there and it makes a hell of a difference under this new deal of how you sign your time. Big difference, because if it's like administrative, it's one-to-one across the board to everybody in the community. Whereas if it's on uh, ponds or park and recreation or whatever else, now all of a sudden it becomes a percentage as to maybe how many square feet of land you have, which means it impacts commercials and large uh, uh, areas that are not, that are impermeable surfaces. So it's all kinds of combinations, but we need to have this out of the way, that we know that those percentages are essentially off the table when we start with this, that that's done, we've agreed on it, looked at it, and make sure they're correct. But I'm not so sure how these numbers were generated over time. I think a lot of it came out of the backside. They were guesses.
Yeah.
And I would hope by now that we've got it down to where some of these guesses are a little bit better than guesses. Because it's, we're, we're talking about a salary here, or a payroll.
Well.
It's a pretty big chunk of change.
I will say with the utility staff by the board approving and implementing cartograph, the work order system that, that has been implemented for most of this year, we're really able to track what the utility staff are working on. Um, like I said, from a, from a management standpoint, I'm going to rely on my calendar, and I'm going to go back and look at my meetings, because I, I keep that up to date, and I would expect the same of, of the other salaried staff. But the field staff, the ones, the specifically public works and parks and rec, like I said, I'm hoping to have some pretty good data from them to support the percentages.
Well, that's, that's, I just don't want that to be an argument when we get later on down, because people are.
They will, they will.
I said trying.
Okay.
Trying to keep it from being an argument, because it is so impacting on the methodology rates. Let's get that part. Everything else that we expend pretty well falls into a category, and it's not too hard to figure out where it falls. Now, we may have some things that we purchase like vehicles and/or equipment that is multipurpose. Again, a percentage, but nothing has the impact as salaries do.
Okay.
And we've got to get that squared away. So I, from a 30,000-foot point, to me, getting that right off the bat, then we can start going through what each one of us see are issues, and putting just footnotes down of add this, add that, add this, add that, why this, why that.
Well, the.
And just see where the numbers come. But to start with having that blank sheet, if you can get that out to us, now we can start each individually starting to go through and just filling in, filling in numbers.
So before you go in this, I want to jump on the same thing that I talked to Ed, because I feel like Ed is saying what I kind of said last year, and I know you weren't here, but um, we had this issue when it came to Stony Brook, uh, and not as much with Pelican that I do recall it. And it was regarding the, you know, Laura's position, how much they were going to pay, and then, so not only this, or, or the staff, with the work they're doing it, but also, and I, I think we did keep track of how much time are you guys are really spending out there, because at the end, it was pretty much, how much are you willing to pay? I mean, it really came to that at one point, and, 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 you know, and I think Chris was part of it, even the, the year before was the same thing, like the 2%, the 3%, I think it needs to be as accurate as, as it can be. And then the next year, it, it can go up, or it's going to go down, but it's just getting stuff that there are actual numbers, I think it's important.
Okay.
And, and then holding those accounts accountable for what they ask. And another thing that happened was, oh, we do not need the district manager for all those hours, we're going to use Georgia, we're going to use uh, Laura, because the salary was less, right? But that didn't happen. So uh, so those, whatever he has, in addition to the people that are really actually going out there, which I guess you'll be looking at your calendar, and, and just.
If it's accurate.
It will go.
So.
Then the other one, the other big one, major issue this year, capital reserves.
Yes.
You go through it, and I, I brought it with me today, and just started looking at it. We're talking about the, the, the bull moose in the room with that. Stony Brook, great example. Stony Brook right now has the capital reserve of 2023 of $10,000. It is recommended that it goes to $200,000. And it has created $200,000 because of a planned expenditure over a period of at least of 2015, but I, I could care less about that. The 2031, to me, is that eight years is critical. You're guessing anything beyond that. But to spend 1.9 million dollars nine years from now, or eight years from now, $10,000 a year, don't do it. It doesn't even get close. That has a major ramification, that a $532 and nine, or 532,000, all of a sudden becomes 800,000. That needs to be determined how we're going to do that. And it's not, I just picked out Stony Brook because it was an easy one to do, it's only a couple pages. Some of the ones in the oh, oh, one and the oh, oh, two accounts are far more complicated and are at a much higher level of interest. We've got to have a discussion of how we're going to do this, because this is, this is the tail's going to wag the dog. This is big bucks.
Yes.
And we have never, ever done it before.
It's, it's, we're fine tuning it and trying to wrap it up. Um, and we, we've gotten information like from the Pelican side, we've gotten from their subcommittees, um, and, and KW, we've got, we, we pulled numbers from the capital reserve study. Um, we've done actuals from a staff perspective, and we've done it for Stony Brook, Pelican, Enterprise Fund, and the General Fund.
Are we positive that the funds, because to start one of these things, it's critical that you know what your starting balances are. Are we positive that our starting balances on every one of these accounts, which then create the cash flow that goes out over eight, nine, 10 years? which then create the cash flow that goes out over eight, nine, ten years? Are we positive they're correct in every account?
We'll get that, we'll confirm.
In other words, I want that off the table because because if it's not there and we don't have the cash, then we have only one choice. That is to generate the cash. Otherwise, you make a mockery of the capital reserve plan. You sit there and go through it, then you go back, and now all of a sudden you start questioning everything that's in it because it didn't come up with the answer you wanted. You can't do that. That's not the way to do a capital reserve.
So we will get those numbers as part of it.
Okay, so let me answer the question regarding.
Those are the things I saw.
The deal that they will take over, then they they wouldn't need a capital or anything like that would be on the HOA, right?
The district assets are no longer the districts, then we don't have to.
So if they want to control that, because they can control it by taking over.
Unless and until that.
Well, but I just think once, because I'm assuming they will be here as well, saying that that's a lot, then then say, well, the way to control it, it's you take over, right?
But that that goes for every one of our accounts, but I I just was looking at the that ours. We've got to get some consensus and get that off. It's one single item. You got, there must be a hundred and fifty lines here. None of them are going to impact that budget like the hundred and fiftieth, which is the capital reserve addition. Nothing we do is going to have an impact like that one right there.
Just I, so I can maybe help clarify for the public. And correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that historically that we've had a five-year CIP and staff and and the board would look to the next five years and and plan on, I'll call it putting out fires or or projects that we would anticipate for the next five years. The different perspective that I have taken and Laura too is that we have a list of all district assets that have an end life. And so just like your own personal property, you have a roof, you have a car, you put money aside to save to replace that. And so we've gone through across all funds and identified any asset that is twenty-five, singular asset that is twenty-five hundred dollars or more. Put an expected remaining life on it, an expected replacement cost, and push that out. The Enterprise Fund, we have twenty-nine lift stations that have hundreds of thousands of dollars of equipment at each lift station. That is a huge number in and of itself. So it will be a sticker shock because we've gone through and identified every single thing that at least we, from a staff perspective, we can think of and and existing projects and then future projects.
I've I've had numerous communities up north take the position of, show me the full meal deal, which is in essence what we've received. There is nothing and nobody's holding a gun to anybody's head that you have to budget the full meal deal. But you sure as heck better have a asterisk, letting the public know that if you need to have two hundred thousand a year, every year to meet an expenditure of, let's say, one point eight million, eight years from now, and you elect to put in a hundred, put it that eighth year, special assessment in big, bold print. So that everybody knows there will be a special assessment.
Well, and I've seen some municipalities do the reverse. Charge it charge upfront now, large, and then reduce that over the next five to ten years. I've seen I've seen both methods.
Older people in a retirement community are.
It's gonna work here. I've just that's I've I've also seen that as well.
And then we gotta think of the utility Lee County, the change, what we're gonna do with that as well.
That's another one. That's that's just a straight add-on.
To me, I would just pass on.
That that's gonna impact the water sewer.
We've got some ideas for that, but the the point of this this kind of this this initiative initiatives is are there areas or pockets or projects that you all foresee for for staff to tackle next year? If it's a beautification, if it's, you know, we do our, we do the holiday event in September.
Do some more holiday events than we had this year. Like maybe do, because we had Christmas, we do, you know, Fourth of July, do maybe.
In the summer.
In summer or Labor Day or Mother's Day or if there's more things.
Well, keep in mind, you said it earlier, Bob, Bob wasn't here, but this June fifteenth date sets the bar.
That's the high water.
That sets the bar. So we can get very imaginative, we can get very imaginative and throw all the stuff in there at at this point in time. And then we have sixty days essentially to manipulate it. But at this point in time, I don't what I I I just don't want to hear what I've heard the last ten years. We've got to keep it at two percent. We've got to keep it. No, we don't. We have to do what's right. We have to do what's right. If we got down and we have something in there that we come to a conclusion that it's excess, it's fat, it's a wish list, get the scissors out, we come. But at this point in time, don't start with that attitude. Do it right.
That's how we're moving forward.
If I'm hearing you correctly, you would like to start with payroll and reserves as the first two items that we tackle when we actually get down to the line items.
Well, I think those are the two that are going to set the tone for what what ends up happening. Because that's where the the big bucks are at. Unless Laura or Chelsea know of right now something that we have in the current budget where we, notwithstanding utilities, that we've just lost control of. We had two hundred thousand and it's gonna be four hundred at the end of the year. I'm not aware. You haven't said anything about that. So it sounds to me like our estimating last year, for the most part, was on 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 tune. The only thing that we've got right now that could upset that, salaries and reserves. Those two, they're they're going to change. They gotta change.
Or knock on wood, hurricane season's less than a month away. But yes, we're I I think we're we're pretty good right now. We're in line. We did have a couple of line items that we brought in front of you all. The street lighting was one, you know, we had some impacts from the hurricane that we over expended, but that was expected. And you all were made aware of that. And then if there are any, you know, we we try to address those in our monthly report.
We just had one come up in our HOA that shocked a few people. The auditors came out. You know, these things, you you lose track of the year before because the audit is nine months late. We we just got ours. And one of the issues was is they they highly recommended that we have a retained earnings, untouchable retained earnings at sixty days. At sixty days. For us, that worked out to be about five hundred thousand dollars. So we introduced into our budget a funding deal, just like capital reserve. We called it retained earnings supplement. And we put that money in. My question is, is it anybody, the audit, or has Steven or anybody ever come back and told us our retained earnings, which if we did sixty days, what are we here? What's our total? Five, five million?
You mean like like five million a month?
I don't think it's called retained earnings. Reserves and 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 some districts have sixty, some have ninety. Sometimes the auditors come back and say, you have too much in reserve. So there's a balance.
Well, the the thing is, if you have too much, you can always put that over into the actual capital reserve. Not talking about something that is not capital reserve.
So for what I what I know from what's come out of the audit so far, they've, I don't ever recall them requiring us to put anything in there. They always recommend it. But it hasn't been a requirement.
Well, I said six million, six point ones. Well, that's five hundred thousand a month. That's a million dollars in cash setting in what they told us to be retained earnings, which was for things like hurricanes and stuff like that.
What what how it works for us, like you have yours where it's they're called restricted, they're restricted reserves where they're earmarked for specific things and that's all you can use them for. Similar to like how we have the capital reserves, where that can only be used for capital funding. And then there's also unrestricted reserves where you can use that for whatever.
Well, my my question is, is do we have that protection?
We're proposing that with this budget for each fund.
Okay, now, so I I think it's kind of the same for us. Once you get those spreadsheets with extra light items and whatever projects we have. Regarding landscaping, I think from what we planned last year, there's only two that I recall that are not completed, not not Stony Brook. But one here on the FPL easement that we talked about that we haven't touched it. I thought we were not gonna have enough money because we needed for the Stony Brook project, but we will. So I would like to have that done, which was the installation of the cocoa plums and stuff. But we may have to revisit since we're doing Delanyum Park, so I I don't think that's gonna be an issue. I don't I don't.
And a lot of the OO one general fund projects are covered in the bonds. The only thing really, furniture, fixtures, equipment, so tools, pieces, larger pieces of equipment that that is not covered in the bond. And so that is part of the CIP and some other. I know one of the other things that the capital reserve study gentleman said, unless you're doing like a full system replacement, landscaping is typically you're operating, but this is your budget.
But regardless of whether it's in the bond or not, if it's in the bond, it's in the rate under the P and I. And then usually when it's in the P and I, it's subject to what, Tony? We got fifteen percent requirement on the bond coverage? Typically fifteen percent?
You're talking about the capital bond for the.
Bond coverage, yeah. But the point is, that's in there as a separate line item of expense that you say, well, we've got two million dollars, but we don't pay two million because we're only paying the P and I on it. Well, we're paying the P and I and the coverage on it, and that's in there.
Yeah, we just need, what we'll need to do in order for Steven to calculate the P and I for the bond stuff is figure out for sure what we're gonna try to tackle next year. Because that'll be the expenses that we'll have so he can calculate what the P and I will.
That's where I'd like to see an asterisk also, so that the people can see when you have that number, because that that's a tricky little number. When you come down there, well, where where's where's that project you did? I don't see that in here. Well, it's buried in the P and I. Have something that shows that that two million is in this bond and that equates to this P and I charge. This is this charge, this is that charge, each one of them, but.
Sorry, I got here late.
And then salaries, adjustments, bonuses, things like that, where does that come in?
But we'll present that as part of the sampling.
We've been talking about that a lot lately.
And then are you gonna be looking at a current a market adjustment if needed, plus merits, plus bonus. So it's like three things.
That'll be part, our plan is to present the salaries for next year with market adjusted rates. And then we would do our normal merit increases on top of that. So depending on where they come in, but that's how we're gonna.
When are we gonna see that?
Your next meeting. On the eighteenth, so the agenda will come out next Thursday.
Give me the big picture, what we're looking at today, because I don't see.
And initiatives, just if if any of the board members have any big picture thirty thousand foot ideas for next fiscal year that you'd like us to start to crunch and go get some pricing on. If it's paint the sky blue, then we'll go get estimates to paint the sky blue. So you can have that as part of your budget.
Okay, am I reasonably correct in thinking if we took last year's budget? Again, forgive me. Last year's budget is a base. Whatever the salary adjustments that we end up determining, market adjustment, bonus, whatever. And if we don't do a capital improvement, then we're pretty much there. Is that correct? The CIP. Then we're operating with last year plus this increase unless somebody brings something up.
Well, the salaries will be one thing.
We're adding the salary.
Okay, and then and then the reserves, are we gonna do the?
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying right now, ignore that. If that's ignored, and I know we can't, but if that's ignored, then we ought to be last year plus.
With the exception of any surprise costs.
I thi- I think is right now, that's kind of how it goes. I think probably what will come with more ideas is gonna be the Parks and Rec's meeting tomorrow. Because I know from the emails that I saw, plus what they discussed at the last meeting, that they do have some ideas that they were not on this year's budget, but I don't think they're necessarily a full, you know, capital.
We're not, we're not thinking of entertaining, what are we thinking of entertaining with the knowledge that we now gain from the the CIP, the capital improvement? We're not gonna accept that thing at at face value and just bump everything, Marv. Is that what I'm hearing?
That, we need to have that discussion. We need to have that discussion, that's for sure. We've got, we now no longer can hide that we didn't, we had no knowledge. We have knowledge. But but the issue is, is now what we have to determine is to what extent we want to fund that that program.
Right, so we could decide to fund it at fifty percent, fifty percent, hundred percent, whatever. Because you're right, that's the lion's share of what's gonna impact our residents. Adminiscule administrative costs.
Those those are nothing compared to that reserve. Then the other one before you got here that we were talking about is having under each one of the twenty twenty-three budget items, lines, blank lines going across that we can fill in instead of writing between the lines, like you like to scribble between the lines. We'll have a line to write on of things that you might want.
Bob, to answer your question directly, I would say the biggest change that I've seen from the operating budget is the lack of items for public works, like actual public works that we we had to identify.
So clearly, we've been handling that up to now. I mean, I understand that. But I'm not ready to jump off the ledge and make everything right with the world in one year. I mean, this is a significant impact for the residents.
The issue we have to come to to consensus on is is that if we don't do that, which we have as an opportunity, we have to make sure that everybody knows that you have got the possibility in one year, two years, five years, ten years. Have a special assessment. And that's when people usually go berserk.
So we we are, from a staff perspective, we are going to provide you the full gamut. And then and then let us know.
And again, June fifteenth, we go high. We can always come back. We can always come back.
Worst case scenario, June is worst case scenario, and then you pare it back.
Have we, so we know with the board and we're gonna wait for the committees, have we received anything from the president's council meeting? Because I know we did talk very little about budget at the Hampton Park. Did they, did they come up with anything that their residents want us to look into it, or they just forgot to follow up on that?
We we had some where we went yesterday to talk about the easements for Hampton Park. We had some interactions with a couple residents. But Randy is going to be pushing out a a post to the community and to all of the HOAs and CAMs of, hey, we're in budget discussions. If you have ideas, email through customer care, come to the board meetings, email your board supervisors. Get involved. So I have not seen anything from from that specific meeting, but we're gonna put the word out.
Because it, we're doing this for them. So we know what we're required infrastructure wise and all that. But all the extras that if that's what they want and they want to pay for it, then we'll do it. My suggestion, again strongly, and that's from Randy, and is I think we need to work on a better partnership with even putting the face to the name, the name to the face with Randy and those HOA presidents and CAMs. Because I still, I reached out to three yesterday and they are still not forwarding those emails that Randy's doing it. So it's not working. So we need to adjust how are we we're getting this? Because it's important that the residents, you know, get this information. And 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 if if we, what he needs is a meeting with Randy and the president's house and let them talk on that, then that's, I think, what we need to do because it's just not, it it's just not working. The type of communication, does it make sense?
Yeah, I I've got some ideas that perhaps we could talk about offline, but I think if if that is our hurdle, we need to figure out how to circumvent that.
We do massive email blasts.
We we do too to the CAM and to the HOA president, but they don't pass it along.
Our, ours, ours do.
Yeah, so same here.
You send it to us, they have the instructions. You immediately get it out.
And I think that's the commitment that I guess we want to see from the presidents or or their board itself. Because we we kind of first tackle like, okay, we send it to the president, but the president didn't check the email for a week. So we ask, okay, send it to the whole board and the CAM. One of them is gonna send it out, but they're really, it's just not passing it along. And just something simple with, please respond if this was done, you know what I mean? Like, so they know that there's a follow-up. It's just not a junk email that doesn't mean anything. I I think we need that. Chris did also good coming into the meetings. And I know that not necessarily you, because now we have Randy, but he did attend HOA meetings. So I know he attended multiple here, Bristol Park, Cypress Gate, Magnolia, Hampton, Stony. So so maybe Randy can, you know, randomly, once a month at then one of the meetings, introduce himself and kind of put the face out there. I think it's important.
Another one that we have that's a big ticket item for the year that I don't know where we're at, and that's the landscaping irrigation system. That can easily be a two, two and a half million dollar ticket. And what was what's our thought on financing that?
It's in the bond.
It's in the bond.
End the series.
Okay, because that one's gonna have, obviously not gonna impact. Okay, cuz that one's gonna have, obviously not gonna impact the OO one, but it's definitely gonna impact the irrigation side of the utility.
Yeah.
And did we put Griffin? Cuz I know we talked uh at the office once about, cuz I don't think Griffin was on this side. We, we, we only had the drip lines on the flower beds, we talked about.
Plan is to do the system wide and.
Including.
Controllers.
And well, right, it's my understanding that there's no irrigation up to here, from here towards eighty-two with irrigation. It's just drip lines, not actual spray systems.
But, but, well, the pipe is there to, with which to bring a meter off and do that.
Yes.
It's just a matter of, of.
Yeah, dripping sprinklers just to crush the volume of water.
Yeah.
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 Control, controllers are a part of that, cuz when we had ballparked the cost for the irrigation system, it did include putting in all new controllers to get rid of those battery operated ones. I believe each controller can handle like two hundred zones, so it's, it's quite a bit. They're confident that the one that they put in by the seven eleven could do all the way up gateway to eighty-two and then.
Or had a preliminary layout of this.
From mainscape, but we haven't, it's not, so it's not formal, we need to get.
It's my understanding that some years ago, a, a landscape architect had put together plans. It's our intent to reach back out, because we have to follow CCNA, reach back out to that landscape architect, let's get the plans into twenty twenty-three mode and then put it out to bid.
I, I wouldn't wanna make sure that that landscape architect knows the current technology of these control systems. I have, I have spent a lot of time getting up to speed on that, cuz we're ready to spend a half a million in our community. And we're gonna start here in the next thirty days.
Go back to the comment on the bond and the landscaping, is this a new bond that we're now gonna implement this year?
No, it's the, the bonds that we issued in March, the irrigation is part of that bond.
Yeah, but that hasn't hit our residents' tax bills yet.
We haven't spent anything that.
Who hadn't paid yet.
But that's going to start beginning next year?
Yes.
Yeah, that's gonna be adequate.
So I wanna make, that's exactly right, so that's one of the changes.
Right.
Maybe won't be the operating budget, but I'm really looking at what is it gonna cost our residents?
Right.
The change.
And, and again, it's not, just because we issued the bonds for, for ten million dollars, doesn't mean we're gonna spend ten million dollars this year. So obviously, your PNI is calculated on what you actually spend.
Yeah.
So it'll change as we spend.
But sometimes, when you think of bonds, you don't think of that as coming out of her pocket, cuz it's a long, well, I mean, seriously, it's a long-term payback.
Yeah.
Look at the bond banks and all the money that that is impacting.
Well, right now, I'm sitting on a stack of, I have a meeting tomorrow with Steven, I have about four hundred thousand dollars in invoices that I need to submit for reimbursement from the bond that are sitting in my.
If you can have that principle and interest like I discussed, a line item for that, and then have one, two, three, four, A, B, C, D, and list the project and show what the PNI and coverage is on it.
Got it.
Then the people can see exactly what that.
Know what they're paying for.
Yep.
See what they're paying for.
I got my note.
Yeah, okay.
Hey, I've got one quick thing, so with staff, um is there any items that staff has heard or things that we might have said, cuz it's kinda difficult on the fly to just, to, um, to rattle off things that we may have talked about in the past? Is there anything that staff has that, that we've mentioned in the past that we should consider that's not in, in the current budget or covered by the bond? You guys have anything, Chelsea?
We, everything that we could possibly think of will be either in the CIP or um like I said, the public works was the biggest change with the O and M, um but not that, not that I've seen so far.
What about the burden cost, insurance, that type of stuff?
I have no idea what that impact is gonna be this year, normally, um, normally Steven will help calculate, uh he and I will talk about like how much we should.
Well, and the, the property insurance, we're still waiting on the claims from Hurricane Ian and.
We've had some automobile claims too, so.
So we don't know how that's gonna impact next year.
One, one thing.
But nothing major, right? No, nothing major outside of what you've already identified, I was trying to think if there's anything, like, I, I was gonna bring it to landscaping and irrigation, but if that's covered in the bond, is there, because I think that's um, big items coming up that we've got to address, um.
Well, I, I would say this, to Doug's point, I do recall Public Works being the one that was chopped in so many pieces, so I would actually like to revisit, I may have it, Ryan's original, this is what Public Works need, because it was revised, do you remember Ed? It was, you know, revised a lot and chopped a lot, so I, just as a refresher, I wanna see what was the mindset then? I just maybe cover under the CIP, but just let's take a look at.
Was that two years ago or?
Twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, I think a lot of that's already been addressed in the bond and the.
I, I do think so, but I, I, I just remember it was a huge reduction from one meeting to another and, and I mean, I, I hate to say what Ed said, but it was pretty much, it was pretty much, you know, I cut it because I needed to get to this number.
Okay.
Yeah, I think a lot of, a lot of the stuff, if I remember correctly, which you guys cut from his budget was roads and sidewalks, which we have been doing the last couple of years.
Yeah, uh, okay.
So good, all right, so is anything else?
If you guys give us good, good direction and the eighteenth, um, you're gonna have a lot of information in front of you. You're gonna have your first draft, the budget, the staffing, everything that you requested today, we've been.
The quicker you can get us the blanks.
Yeah.
We can start working.
So we'll.
Are we having a workshop on the eighteenth and two or?
Uh, no, just be part of the meeting.
Part of the meeting.
Yeah, so my, my goal is to give Prak a chance tomorrow to discuss stuff, and I'm gonna try, I'll do, I will get it to you Monday, by end of day Monday.
Do, Bob, touching on that, do you feel like we need another workshop prior to the meeting on the eighteen to just?
Well, I'm, I'm open to it, only because I'm very concerned about this CIP and, uh, but if we don't have the. If we don't have the salary changes at all.
That's the only item, but you're working on her already, right? Yeah.
So if my, my request is if, I, I agree, um, that I think we should have a, a workshop or at least discussion um solely on those, those couple of items, um if, if you guys wanna do that earlier in the week of that, the eighteenth, um, we can, we can schedule that accordingly.
Okay, and then, I, I think that'll be wise, and then that will also uh add the HOAs and the residents, like how we talked about. So it'll be whatever else that we, we don't know.
Maybe the sixteenth, that's a Tuesday.
Whatever, I'm available, you guys decide.
Carol, Tuesday, good for you.
Sure.
As far as I know.
In the afternoon then.
We, I will, I'll have to move some meetings around, but um we should be able, is the boardroom available?
What, what date is that?
Tuesday, the sixteenth of May.
Hold it, hold it, hold it, sixteenth, that's the day we wanna have the.
There you go.
We're going to meet with the, uh.
Arcatus.
Arcatus.
I'll have to move it.
Move there.
That's up to you, you're.
Yeah, yeah. That's my best day, that's why.
See if we can do it earlier in the day that day.
Yeah, let me know so we can get the notice out, cuz it's new.
Sixteenth at.
What time?
Three.
Sure.
It'll give us about two hours.
Okay. So, can, can I just be clear what is expected? Well, let's, let's iron it out, cuz we have to do a, the notice, but the expect, expectation is the staffing, the CIP, the percentage, everything, everything involved with the staffing, uh the CIP.
And the preliminary budget.
Well, if you.
What you've got so far.
Okay.
If you send out this deal that we're talking about, the blanks, I would, I would like to go through and start filling in. And one of the ones I was gonna do is just do maybe three of them, one with a ten percent of the capital reserve, one at fifty percent, and one at a hundred percent, run all three off and see what it does, cuz it's going to be a major impact.
We can get you those documents.
All right, so that's it?
So is the sixteenth at three iron?
Yep.
Yes.
Good.
All right, Tony, so then you can get the notice out.
Let me clarify, you're not looking for the tables that'll show what the assessments are gonna be at this point, are you? Rests final numbers yet either, so I don't know, I haven't gotten that sheet yet.
No, but I would be looking for line items.
Yeah, the line items, absolutely, I have that, that's not a problem.
And if we have last year's stake in the sand.
Yeah.
We can just extrapolate it from mines, whatever changes we're making and what it's gonna impact.
Right, I'll work with Steven to have something, I can usually have like a pretty rough one available for our meeting on the first, but it's not gonna be absolutely positive, this is what it's gonna be, line items, yes.
All right, yeah, perfect, so, um, to be honest with you, if we can have a couple hours, I would even, because I need to learn, um, I'd like to go line item by line item. It'd be the only, we won't have another meeting, so yeah, I agree, like.
Well.
Four o'clock.
Yeah, three o'clock.
I wanna, I wanna make it clear, Laura's gonna strike me down for this, but if you need individual time with staff to go through the budget, I know Bob had some, Carol, if you need some, please get with Laura, and you can go through line item by line item. We have the accounting software, so Laura's been geeking out.
I've been learning.
So please, please schedule some time with her if you'd like to go into a lot of detail.
Mid to late next week would be better.
Well, we go into, I mean, we, we have typically done exactly what we're saying.
Yeah, so I.
Nothing new, we, we do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, she doesn't, she's very.
No, no, Carol's totally new, but I mean, Chelsea wasn't part of it, like, we, we do go.
All right, so, anything else, cuz it's three o'clock, and I'd like to take at least a two-minute recess.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, uh, okay, so we'll go ahead and adjourn, and then we'll take a, a two-minute recess. Ready?
Yeah.
Okay, hello, everyone, can I just have your attention? Bob? All right, so it's three oh nine, and uh we'll go ahead and we'll call this meeting to order. And in attendance, uh, oh, and then we'll go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. And to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all. We have a full house. All right, so roll call, in attendance, we have Bob, Ed, Carol, and online, we have Doug. Uh, I would need a motion for Doug.
Section. Their circumstances.
Okay, so we have.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, approval of the final agenda?
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
We'll go ahead with public comment.
All right, I have several, uh, first is Margaret Feinberg, uh regarding lake restoration on Lake sixty-two.
Good afternoon, Margaret Feinberg, for the record, Stony Brook Gate Gateway, and I was, I was part of the project when the lake bank restoration started, and I have to say that what happened on Lake sixty-two, and I haven't been out on Lake fifty-eight recently, but the, the quality of the work that Met Tower has done out there is terrible, and I know that you saw it, Ed, I was surprised when a couple meetings ago, you did not complain more than you did about the, the quality of the work out there. There are areas where ruts that were created by the equipment that was used are just merely being hovered over with grass, the ruts are still there, they didn't even bother smoothing the areas along the lake bank or where there's ingress and egress, you can go out there and you can see the ruts. They just grassed over, I've never, I've never seen this poor quality of work. And the stone is already, there's been, I don't know if they fixed it, there was also, there was already a breach on Lake sixty-two where the stone was allowing water uh to the lake bank, and I don't know if the pipes have even been cleaned out. I know that soil was pushed into the ends of the pipe and rock probably now, I don't know. You can't see the end of the pipe, I'd like to know if those are going to be cleaned out or flushed, so that they're working properly. I'd like to know if those are going to be cleaned out or flushed, so that they're working properly. But I'm, I just, I have to say that they just covered up areas where there's trampoline-like. When you're walking on the TRM, it was trampoline-like, they didn't bother fixing most of those areas, they just put rock over it or they put grass over it. And I hope that there's going to be a final inspection and, and there's going to be a punch list. I don't know if that's already been done, but I would like to know if it's going to be done and when it's going to be done, because I'd actually like to at least tag along and hear the conversations. Because I hope you hold back their final payment until they get this right, it's not good.
Okay.
Question, Margaret, you talking about the ruts are in the area where they ingress and egress to the construction? In other words, above the, uh, the, the, the stone line?
That's one of the areas.
Okay, because I haven't been back for the, at least three weeks, uh, to see it. I was concentrating on what was under the fabric.
Yeah, and it's.
I was very concerned, and I think Bob went out also, and I think Flavia went out, and all of us, uh, were concerned about what was under that. Our engineer reported though, much to my chagrin, that, uh, all tests performed, passed. That makes it very difficult to have.
All tests?
All of the compaction tests that were on that required as part of the project, all passed. That was one of the problems, uh, I mean, if, if, if that's your, uh, your, your bar, that you have to meet the compaction requirement and you meet, meet it, it's very difficult to go, to go back out and throw out other things they have to do that weren't required. My deal is, I suspected two things, one, I didn't see how I could pass the, uh, compaction.
Exactly.
And then the other one that I didn't understand was there were places where I didn't see how it met the four-to-one slope.
Exactly.
So I, that, those were the two that I was concerned about. I was told neither, at no place did they have failure to meet the four-to-one slope. So I, I'm going by what the professionals told me.
And that was Tetra Tech?
Yes.
Wow.
Yep.
Okay, so I was, just to add that, I know we did not have a final walkthrough. I less spoke with Wyatt and he was going to do just a pre-walk with Tetra Tech and I believe Met Tower. And then I, and tried to catch some of the items that needed attention then, and then schedule a final walkthrough, which I think, I believe I, I said that I wanted to be a part of that, just kind of, I, eyes on the ground, just because I was able to keep a long list. You didn't hear a lot of my complaints, but I kept, I sent it to Chelsea, a long list from, on a daily basis, I was over there. Um, I saw on sixty-two, I saw there's some opportunities for all the ruts in between the homes and easement on one of them. On fifty-eight, the only location that I did see, um, I did not see it, I, I didn't see the, the issue, but I did see it on sixty-two in one of the access points. Uh, regarding the, the toll, I think, I don't necessarily know if it's a problem. Um, the toll of the rocks, so the larger rocks in the bottom of the pond, um, a portion of the, the pond, it's under, like, those are underwater and the other portions are not, I just think that's just because we had a little bit of rain. Um, there was a small section that it, it looked like it did cave in, um, that I think it needs attention. Regarding the cleanup of the pipe, when I did speak with, uh, I believe it was Met Tower on site, that was not part of the work for them to clean that. So that would be a, a work order. What now, I would, I believe it's a gray area, it was during the construction, right at that location, there was an irrigation break, there were actually multiple irrigation breaks there that the water was running through it. So while it was not part of the, the scope, it would have asked for a change order. I wonder if any of that erosion, because it was directly above that specific structure, uh, on, between, I think, twenty-seventy-four, the, the second home, if it was caused by them, then I would expect them to clean it. But otherwise, I think it would have to be a change order because it was not part of the scope.
If they, if they clogged up with any of their construction activities, whether it's part of the scope or not, they have to clean that pipe out. Our problem is, is that we're probably going to have to pay somebody to go in there and do a visual inspection of a couple of those pipes to find out where we thought we saw something and verify whether what we saw is true or not. If it's true, we go back to them and tell them to clean it, because if their construction blocked the pipe, that's, that's not good. And that is not a change order.
It needs to be investigated. Yeah, at least one location, I don't know about all of it, but on sixty-two, there's one location that I'm concerned, go ahead, Chelsea.
So, statements are correct, um, there, there was a pre-contractor and Tetra Tech walkthrough this week. Uh, the final punch list and walkthrough has not occurred because I will be on that final walkthrough.
Good.
We have same expectations, and there are pre-construction, the contractors required to do pre-construction videos and pictures. And so, your statement's correct, if returned to existing conditions, if not better. Um, and we will address these issues, um, and make sure that it's done appropriately and per the contract. And, uh, if they did meet the density test, then, um, we have to go by that, but final walkthrough and punch list is, is coming.
Thank you.
For the, for the final walkthrough and punch list. I know, I've been out there to see it, so I would like to participate in that, I'm sure that Ed and Flavia, is there a way we can all do it?
Not to my knowledge.
As long as we don't talk to each other whatsoever.
One at a time, you can go out there.
Well, you're not going to do the punch list one time for our, Ed and me.
Right, you, you can't, and, you know, a- again, you can go up one at a time, but generation of the punch list would have to be, if the board wants to do it, it has to be in a public setting.
If the staff. In a public setting, can we go?
The staff or engineer are going to do it, then they can do it, recommendation.
So can we have a, uh, can we have the initial walkthrough done by whoever we specify? And then separate walkthroughs, and if any items are identified, have that added to the final punch list? Is that, is that possible?
Contractor to buy off on that.
So, can you gi- give staff, myself, the opportunity to do the walkthrough? I will let you all know as soon as that's complete, and I can, we can type up the list, and if you choose, if you want to walk it and add to that list.
Well, what we can do is, we go out individually.
Yeah.
Ahead of the punch list.
Yeah.
And we give you our concerns to look at while you're doing it.
You can do that.
That, that's, that's a good idea, that's a good idea.
Again, I would suggest that there just be factual observations, not recommended solutions.
Pictures worth a thousand words.
Well, if we walk across it. Well, that's a factual observation.
Correct.
The problem you've got, again, that's not a recommendation of, take it up and put more fill and compact, it's just that this area is low, this area is soggy.
The, the, the problem you've got with what Bob just described is right now, with the combination of the, uh, stone that's been placed down, which is about generally four inches thick, you're not going to see anything. What, when it's going to happen is when we get a couple of rains and we find out that it truly did not have the compaction, it's going to start rutting out, and now all of a sudden, you'll see the surface have a dip in it.
Okay.
And, and, and we have, I'm assuming on a one-year, uh.
Warranty.
A warranty basis, yeah, so.
Well, we, we.
That'll be also our, our fallback.
Okay, I have two questions, you have one question, go ahead.
I just had one other question, and that was, there's so, was supposed to be a change order so that that area at the end of Lake sixty-two, behind that one resident was fixed, has that been done?
No.
It's, it's been.
It's the one with the canyons?
Yeah, someone that goes around the, the northwest corner or northeast corner.
Totally ignored it.
There, there was a work directive given to the contractor to perform that additional work. The contractor's work now backing, going back into it and putting together the actual change order pricing and, and information. So we have not executed the change order, but a work directive was given.
Okay, perfect, Ed, I do have one question for you, so regarding the compaction, was that done prior or after we notify the district of the, the washouts?
I think it was done prior.
Yeah, so I think that's, uh, I know there's four locations.
Well, typically, you, what the contractor will do is, once the, uh, the fill material's put in and placed, he will run a density test. Given him a, a go, no-go to go ahead and put down the Armamax. I was of the understanding that test was done prior to them doing it, and that's why they went ahead and put down the Armamax, because it was accept, acceptable.
Okay, so there are four, so I guess we'll, we'll do it in the lunch, because there were four areas after we put the Armamax that still had erosion due to irrigation. So those areas were not, you know, retested for compaction, and I think that's what the concern that Margaret was trying to bring it up. What they did is added additional, uh, rock, which with the weight is expected that would just fix it.
And for the compaction, it's just an isolated area.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we have, it's. Huge areas there that.
Yeah, it's.
I can compact it great right here, and then I can stop.
Yeah.
And that's the problem you always have with testing, you can do it here and fake pass and go to, and it'll fail.
But it's very different than other parks.
I think what we need to find is to get, have Tetra Tech give us a copy of where the locations of the tests were performed.
Okay.
Alright, uh, I'm probably going to slaughter this, but James is a perennial.
Yeah.
Uh, you're, you're here to speak about eleven A, did you want to wait till that agenda item actually comes up? Or did you want to talk about it now? Okay, alright. And then I have two non-agenda items, uh, first one is Joel McCoka from Stony Brook, uh, regarding the landscape contract. Three minutes.
Three or five?
Three. I promise I won't talk when you're talking.
We had an incident earlier this year, we had a meeting with staff, talking about some of the changes that we needed to do in the landscaping contract that we had. And it was agreed upon at that meeting, and I have a couple of the other people that were there with me here today, that nothing would happen until we got to the budget period, because we both had budget issues to deal with, both Stony Brook and Gateway. Wasn't just a few weeks later, um, staff went to both mainscape, told them to stop, stop cutting in some of the areas in our community because they didn't believe that everything was Gateway-owned property. And then actually went and talked to our other landscaper that has nothing to do with the CD and told them they had to cut those areas. It created chaos. We had three-foot weeds that were growing along Pebble Brook, we had areas that nobody was cutting. In fact, for a little while, mainscape even stopped coming in. Now, we had a contract with mainscape to cut certain areas, some of it may have been Stony Brook property, because that was the most efficient way to access that property was from above the road. And they understood exactly the square footage they were cutting and how much they had agreed to get paid. And now I don't want the door, did we get any credit for the area that was, uh, not being cut by then? No, did we get extra bills from the other landscaper? Yes, we did, and it's created a problem. Well, you also converted over to the new system for us, that Pelican uses, where money is fronted and put into a separate account. And then we need to use that money to spend and then submit bills to get reimbursed. Three months, three months, we could not access that money. Things went unpaid, it got so bad, because we only have so much money to work within our own budget to make up the difference. Plus, we don't pay bills out of our office, I don't know if any of you do, we don't, that's a control, the management company pays the bills. We couldn't get our gates fixed when someone hit it and broke it, because they wouldn't come out unless they got paid. We had no means of paying them, we tried to pay them from the management company on an accelerated basis, couldn't do it. Inexplicable to me, but their process would not allow, we tried to pay our credit card, because it had maxed out ahead of time, could not do it. They wouldn't let us do it. I had to put twenty-four hundred dollars on my credit card to get our gate fixed in Stony Brook, think about that. Right now, we're looking at this new contract that, that is being proposed, and on there, it shows how we're saving money. The question is, how are you saving it? Where's the money coming from? And I noticed you put everything together, and we look at it, and we don't see how it's being broken down. It looks like everything's being included together. And I want to say, this reminds me of way back, and I don't know if it's anybody that was here then, but all the money used to be in one account at one time. And when anything was spent out of the money here, the, there was no way to know what was supposed to be there or what was coming or going, unless you had paperwork to back it up. I tried to reconcile one, a couple of years in a row, and couldn't get it to reconcile. And I know Margaret finally got access to some of the journal entries and disbursements, and it was thirty-six thousand dollars missing. I stood here at this podium and threatened to go to the Attorney General's office, and you probably remember that, Tony. And I, I don't know if it was Cal, which was the manager at the time that was sitting up here.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up.
Okay, well, I will say this, the result of that contract will be very similar, because it does not define who's paying for what, where. That's my point, and I'm worried about that.
I have some stuff, go ahead.
Questions. Talking about common areas that belong to the district.
We want.
We talking about a blend?
It's a blend, because of the way it breaks down.
Sidewalk.
Yes, the sidewalks and all the other things, we go beyond the sidewalks, but they don't want to buy into it.
Okay, do, I got a couple of questions. We delineate over on our HOA, we delineate what the common area is, and we have it on a map, and that is the basis of a bid we get from mainscape. There isn't any question about what they do.
Because you have one, one person doing it.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
What I don't understand is, is that if we've entered into an agreement with mainscape to do the work in the common area, or a area that i- is equal to the common area, yeah, because of that crazy sidewalk. I don't understand how we could have a problem on, on, on that. If mainscape does everything from the back of the sidewalk to the street, period. That's well-defined, and then your contractor would do everything on the roof or outside, the other side.
The problem.
Seems to me to be, not saying that that's perfect, but it's a way of doing it, and it's definitive.
The problem is, Ed, that on one side, the sidewalk is five feet wide, and it's three mi- three feet from the road. It's a sixty-foot right-of-way.
I understand.
There's thirty feet, it actually goes ten feet beyond that sidewalk.
But your problem is, if you don't do it by inside the sidewalk and outside the sidewalk.
I know, it, it's crazy.
Have such a, there's, you'd have to put a chalk line, a paint line down the road to define the right-of-way, because we know the right-of-way's straight, but the sidewalk's not.
And, and it goes beyond that, because there also is the issue of the other side of Gateway Boulevard, which they're saying is ours and it's not. And if they want to change that and claim that, then get a survey and show me that it's ours, I know it's not.
Let me, let me go back to that one in a minute, because I think I have an answer for that.
Okay.
But, the, the, the bills, I don't understand the bills, if you guys have got invoices, I'm assuming the process is we just turn.
We could access the money to spend it. Somewhere it was lost in transition and nobody could get to the bottom of it, three months before we can get access to the thirty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Beginning of April, okay?
Let me, I'll, I'll let her take on it, at, next on that, because you're, you're above my pay grade. Relative to Gateway Boulevard, I've looked and I, I've passed on, I'm assuming, uh, he, you got, got the, the drawings?
I do.
Okay. Everything I look at, and I'm talking to the engineer and the surveyor who laid out Gateway, as I understand it, the backside of the sidewalk to the fence of the dump belongs to you all. Everything else belongs to us, or, well, not us anymore, it's, uh, Lee County.
The only.
That's my understanding.
The only thing I can say about that is that the easement or the right-of-way there is a hundred foot wide.
That is correct.
And you can take from the middle of the road.
You can't go by that.
Okay, I'm just saying.
I, I went that way and the surveyor said you cannot do that.
Okay.
What you have to look at, and what he described to me, is that the backside of the sidewalk to the east is one hundred feet, is what is generally the right-of-way. Your easement or your property that you guys own that's showing up on LIPA is from the sidewalk to the dump. Backside of the sidewalk to the dump, and, and it varies, it's eight to ten, eleven feet.
And, and the pro, can I just real quick and wrap this up? The problem with that is, it doesn't reflect what is the villages at Stony Brook, and there's a discrepancy there.
I did not go, I didn't go.
Well, that's what I'm saying, because they come, it doesn't show up on that map, how far they come over, that's the problem.
You're talking when you come out of Stony Brook, right there to diagonal to the left. Yeah, I don't know how far they come out.
And, and it does not reflect it on the map, it's wrong. Okay?
I'm not sure what map Joe's referring to, but I think with the most helpful instrument.
The plat, the plans for the road.
But I think the most helpful instrument is the survey that was performed, the alte survey that was performed, when that section of Gateway Boulevard was conveyed to Lee County. It shows the location of everything, and whether it's in or outside or right-of-way, right around that area, so we can tell what's within the right-of-way. And I think, uh, we've, we've talked about that before.
Who did that survey?
Uh, I think RWY, I can pull it up real quick, because that, that shows you where.
It was getting done by whole montes.
I, I can pull it up real quick, I think.
That's whose survey I used.
And it shows certain things inside and outside the right-of-way, but that's the document that shows what is in and what is outside the right-of-way.
Tony, if you can get that to me, I'd appreciate it very much.
Sure, because the, the plat does not show infrastructure improvements, it just shows tracks and lot lines. And we all know that the LIPA aerials have a bias or color.
Oh, not, not only that.
Four feet, whatever they might call it.
LIPA shows some of the property still in the possession of United Homes, US Homes.
Yeah, well, that's, that's another different story, but we're talking about where improvements are located. Oh, I can send that to you, Joe.
I appreciate it, we'll look at it.
Can you email me, make sure I have your correct email address?
Okay.
I'm, just to make sure sometimes.
I'm not sure I have yours, but. You do, okay, we're. You do? Okay, we're good.
Alright, so I do want to touch on, and I, I actually, um, Joe had reached out regarding the, um. The ability to pay the vendor. And I had a conversation with Laura and we went over emails and communication. So I would say, Laura, do you want to go into the details of how it started?
Sure, uh, we issued the mon- the wire for the money in January. I assumed it had gone. At beginning of March, I get an email saying we never got the money. Been two months. We just assumed it had gone. I didn't follow up on it. Nobody said anything. And I did offer to, to cut them a check to fund it and I provided all the forms and everything that they would need to submit to us to get reimbursed for their expenses. I, as of today, have not received any reimbursement requests from them. So I can't pay if they don't submit anything.
So you don't have scape or?
No, it's Stony Brook. For Stony Brook. So I, I am concerned that it took them two months to say, hey, we never got the money that you wired us in January. It did arrive. They have the thirty thousand dollars. It's in their account. It was confirmed that it was delivered.
So, so there is no denying that the money took that long, but when we did the transfer, nothing comes back to us because it, it kind of separate. So it says yes.
Are you working through your PAM? Who's supposed to send the invoices?
I'm gonna say that, uh, the person that we're looking for is treasurer, who's now a new treasurer and sitting behind you.
Do you want to get, just for the recording?
Okay, I need you to get in my.
Yeah, I just wanted to find out, who, who was supposed to send the invoices in here that sounds like they didn't get sent in? I guess that's the issue.
Okay, so just name it.
Gary Lippold, new treasurer, but I came down and even had a meeting with you about it.
Yeah, that was two months after. It was at the beginning of March and I didn't know for sixty days that the money had never gone. And I did offer to cut you a check and we found the money and we sent it and I got confirmation that it was there. But I, as of today, have still not received a single reimbursement request from them.
It will shortly. But is it our fault that the money didn't go through or is it their fault?
As far as we knew it went.
Yes, we knew, but nobody checked on it.
We don't, it's not up to, we, we sent it and then I just, I would expect that if it didn't come that they would let us know.
Seems to me, we, we had a very similar situation over in our deal. Who is handling your paperwork that would have known that the check was either in your account or it wasn't?
Well, I'm sure the cam.
See, that's, that's, that's my point. That's where you start.
I check with the emails and stuff with Laura and, and. We don't get a notification that, hey, the money was there and they, they, they got it. We don't get that. We get up to the fence. And then from there on, it's on them to tell us. We wouldn't never know. The bank doesn't notify us that, hey, this didn't go through. It, it just says it went through. So the stuff that Laura and I looked at it, it said it did go through. So yes, there's no denying it took that long, but I don't necessarily think on this particular issue it was admin fault on us. Because it's something that we don't check for, like, we wouldn't know until they told us and it took two months to tell us.
I had sent them something before we sent the wire. I said, I'm sending it today. Please let me know if you get it or not. I heard nothing until March.
Well, what happened is we had a new cam start in the beginning of February. And I think you all know how that works. Usually, uh, it's chaos for a little while. And, but I thought that the previous, uh, treasurer had contacted somebody or sent an email. And I, and I knew that Gary had gone down to the office to discuss it. We had a problem. We were checking with our bank and they were telling us for a while, there's no money there and, and it was out in the, uh, ether, as they say. And I thought so too.
Okay, so that's been rectified. We're just gonna be waiting.
It's working now, but we didn't have the money to spend, so we got to spend it, get receipts and then.
So now we just, now the ball is on your court. You need to get us the information so we can do the reimbursement and what.
So I want to be clear. What, what prompted this was the O and M agreement that has been in place since two thousand twelve. Was finally put into place. And so we had some things that we had to iron out. We had some hiccups. Um, we worked through it. Um, we've made it very clear that if, if, you know, just because Stony Brook, just like with Pelican. If Stony Brook has issues, they, we're still here. We can always assist if there, if there's issues with payment, you know, we have credit cards. But the money has been given. It's in their account. Uh, I'm assuming it's being spent. And we should see hopefully a reimbursement request per, I think it's the tenth day of the month, per the O and M agreement. Um, and Laura, I know, has offered a couple of times to sit down with whom, whomever from their side will be, uh. Putting together that report so we make sure it meets our expectations like we do with Pelican. Um, and the day-to-day operations of Stony Brook are, uh, with the HOA per the O and M agreement.
Right, and then I just have one more question just to you. So regarding the landscaping, right? I think the meeting that Joe was speaking of was the November meeting, which I was not present. I was present at the.
I was there. I was there.
No, I said I was.
Oh, I'm, I.
Okay, so I was not present, so I don't know what was, what happened. I was present at the meeting with Chris over here. And I do remember, um, us stating. And this is the only thing that is different, that nothing would change until we could prove that those were not ours. So I don't remember anything regarding the budget because I guess that conversation was on November, which I was not a part of it. The conversation that I had here was there was a still discrepancy. I think Margaret was here that, you know, we don't know who this belongs to. So let's continue everything the way it is until we, you know, Chelsea would have come up and say, look, these are the maps that, you know, those are, those are definitely yours. And then take it over that way. So has that been done? Because what he's saying is they stopped doing the work. And to me is they would only stop doing the work if we were able to clearly define that line of what ends and what begins.
Yes.
And they got paid for it regardless. And they were paid for it.
So we had multiple meetings with the Stony Brook HOA. And we had color-coded maps to identify common areas owned by the HOA, district areas owned by the district. Um, and provided those color-coded maps to Stony Brook. They made the request to, we were going to, um, transition. Um, and, and stop doing the HOA's property and we had selected a date. There was a request to extend that a month. That was granted. Um, and then it was made clear at one of the meetings that, hey, in order for this continuity of services to continue. We, we said we'd make ourselves available to meet with their contractor and, and mainscape to go over exactly the areas. That needed to be picked up by the HOA and that occurred. And so, um, it's, that's, we've been operating, I think, since January, February.
I think, I think my question was there were, during that meeting with those maps, we sat here. There were at least three areas. There were like hot areas. They were like, no, those, they were unclear. And I believe if my memory serves me right, that you were going to reach out to Tony to get clarification, just like how we did at a Pelican. Of who that item belongs to. And, and is that my memory serves me right? So that's what I want to know. Cause I know we provided the map and color-coded it, here's what I. But when we did that, they didn't agree with that map on at least three areas. And then my recollection was that you were going to either get Tony or somebody else to finalize, say yes or no. But meanwhile, we were going to maintain those until we had a formal yes or no. I, I believe it was Tony. That you were going to reach out to. So I guess that's my question because we did tell them until we, we proved to you that it's ours, we'll keep it. Otherwise.
I'll have to go back and look at those maps and the meeting notes from when Keith was here. Um, but it, like Mr. Tinkle said, we, we left that meeting agreeing that because of the meandering sidewalk. The district would maintain from back of curb on both sides in, understanding that the meandering sidewalk.
Yeah.
May exceed the district's right of way in spaces and some, may be less. Um, and so that's been, uh, the, the direction for mainscape moving forward. So, uh, I will follow up with those three, those three areas and perhaps if you could provide those, if you have those readily available.
Would we have a map that shows these three areas?
Well, right now, we're going to, uh, get something from Tony and we'll take a hard look at that. I always like to see when that survey was done. And what timeline it was.
Time's running out.
Okay, because. It implies that things were taken care of and it was getting done? No, it wasn't getting done. Now, let me just tell you how bad it got. People were using that as an excuse to go after the board. And we lost our president. He got voted off the board because people were so upset about it. That's how angry it got.
Okay, and so, so we're clear. The O and M agreement leaves the oversight, the day-to-day responsibilities of. GSCDD assets in Stony Brook with the HOA. So it is their responsibility to oversee these assets.
One of the problems we've had with staff right now is they don't want to go back and look at how things were and how things ran. And the precedents that were set. I'm gonna read a quick seconds here. And this is from.
Joe, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you this. It's, it's three.
Okay.
We still have it. I think we'll get the information from Tony. And then if there's another meeting, I mean, I'll make myself available. I'll just be there as a second eye, but I think I'm confident that either of you meet with either Tony or Chris. And, and. dotted on that. And if anything else, just send us an email.
I did send a email, you a letter. You saw it. And the key line that my, that, uh. Bill Knight put in there and how he looked at the assets. And I think that's critical. Cause that established the relationship and what the understanding was at that point in time.
My, my, my thing is, is that we, we already know. That when we take it, if we adopted the policy of mowing everything on the back of the sidewalk to the curb under, under us, under the project. There's going to be places where it's in and it's out. So why are we so worried about the legal status of the other three places?
Well, this is one of the three places.
Why do we care?
Uh, well, the problem is then we'll pay another landscaper to do it, but then give us back the money that we paid to, uh, mainscape, which didn't happen.
Well, you will at the end of the year, right?
It would return to their, um, reserves.
So what we're saying though, right now, we need.
Returned to us.
No, it will.
Any unspent funds falls into the reserve.
Unspent funds, okay? How much should have been spent? That's the issue.
Well, the thing, what I would say is right now, it sounds like to me is we're simply waiting to finalize a map. Is that correct? And I don't understand why we're trying to.
I don't want to get into right now, having to do with the O, O four fund. And that, that's for another day, okay?
Okay. Okay, so let's, okay, so we'll take the next, uh, okay, we'll take, Tony, do you need anything?
No, it's for clarification. The survey that I'm just, just sent to Joe is it's two thousand sixteen with Skateway Boulevard. Gateway Boulevard.
Yes. Okay. Because you're talking about the other side, outside of the gates and, and their concern, their concern was inside. Okay, we.
This is how we feel.
Who is the next person that we?
Uh, Chris Capiello from Stony Brook. Uh, it says it's a non-agenda item, but doesn't say what. Three minutes reminder. I'm gonna hold on to it.
Quicker than that because Joe hit a lot of the points. Chris Capiello, Stony Brook. The ex-president. Um, the first thing I want to do is just to piggyback a little bit on the end of Joe's conversation. That whole thing that went on with the landscaping. I don't want to get too deep into it because we just did. But my initial question is, why? Why did anyone here try to fix something that wasn't broken? And no positive gain for anybody except for financial impact to Stony Brook? Just something to think about, put in your mind, because it was working beautifully. And then if we're waiting on the maps. Why was mainscape given a hard date of February first to stop cutting? And leaving us in a bind four months into your budget and one month into our budget? It just didn't make any logical sense. It, there should have been a better way to do it. Hey, we're thinking about doing this. Prepare the O, O four budget, prepare the HOA budget, and it's going to be effective October first when the budget year is over. That would have given everybody time, but this is, nobody benefited by this. We're hearing headaches. We're having to come down here complaining if you guys had aches. You guys don't deserve it. You got more important things to worry about. And it wasn't broken. It was running beautifully. So at the very least, Ben, mainscape should honor what they were supposed to do and keep cutting after February first. Until the map is finalized at the very least, or preferably until September thirtieth, when the budget runs out. Because we've already taxed and collected the money from the Stony Brook residents to pay for this. It doesn't really matter whose asset it is. It needs to get cut and the money's been collected. But that's all I have to say about, you know, tagging on to the end of that. Well, that's it too. Yeah, February, March, April, and I don't know about May, but. You're paying, they're paying mainscape the same amount for February and for March, even though they didn't cut. So mainscape should refund money to the district because you guys paid it.
Well, who gave mainscape a work order to, to not do something?
It would have to come from.
What, what did we do that for?
Because they were not, we, we walked away from that agreement that the district would no longer be maintaining HOA property.
And I think.
So it's back to the, uh, the, the territory being served.
So I think, and one thing that I just wanted to touch on, this is probably the, the Stony Brook was, was the area that was the most complicated one. But this is not a one-off. I know we had at least five different areas because the directive was given. From the board to Chelsea and because we are not allowed to maintain properties that are, they're not owned by us. So this is not a one-off. I know Timber Ridge was one, uh, but the school was another one. Um, I think there's another area across from the tavern. That's another one. Uh, Daniel's, there's, there were multiple areas. Um, but I think this, because of how this is paid in a testament, it became more complicated. But we stopped across the board. So if anything, I will tell you that Stony Brook get an extra. Another thirty days, another thirty days. And we, I do understand that you guys paid for it, but at the same token, the other people that we went. We just said, we just found out this doesn't belong to us. Immediately it's not getting, taking care of it and you take care of it from now on. So.
All have a whole fours that they were.
Yours is, that's what I'm saying. But I don't want you, Stony Brook to feel like they were.
Singled out.
Singled out. This was across. I mean, we just found out another one. Two weeks ago, there was Royal Greens that we didn't know and it wasn't mowing, but it was irrigation affected, you know? Uh, just the way that we adjusted our sprinklers and then now they didn't get the free water they were getting for us. So it, I, I do still see a few more coming. Um, but yeah.
Alright, you have another one?
Just a couple of other things to mention. Um, where do we stand on the, any. Uh, traction on the insurance claim for the signs?
We are still waiting on.
Still, it was still in holding. Okay, the cutting. Uh, the O, O four is still with this cutback and us doing the thirty thousand and all of that kind of stuff, paying our own bills. We're still paying for four employees here out of the O, O four. They probably aren't getting utilized. So we should think about that, which we're gonna think about next week when we submit our budget.
Is this that percentage?
Yes.
Okay.
There's also, and I know, I know Flavi knows about this, the nine street lights out on Gateway Boulevard. That the O, O four is paying for, but you have told us that they're O, O one lights. So we should get that rectified also.
No, hold on. I, I haven't told you that they were. You guys came up to us and told us that they were O, O one. And we said at that meeting, if they're belong to us, we will take care of it. So I think you guys educated on us that they did not belong to you. But I think that's.
Within the easement off.
Yeah, that's being taken care of it by Chelsea with FPL.
It, I gotta go back and look at my emails because I believe I had contacted FPL to address that. And that's what prompted the other five aesthetic lights close, close to your community.
And it's kind of weird that they came in on a separate note. They came in and put in the new LED lights and. Don't they put the new one up on the pole and then test it to see if it comes on before they walk away?
No.
It hasn't come on since they put it up.
No.
Come on, Chris, that's common sense.
Yeah, alright.
Um. The median up at the end of Gateway Boulevard is outside Stony Brook is.
It's, it's, the board approved at the last meeting, the.
It's all rough.
So it's, we're, we're working through with the contractor for scheduling and MOT. So we have to, we have to do the concrete volnoses for.
First, yeah.
And then we will have mainscape come in, but.
They already started, actually. They removed all the annuals for the concrete.
The POs have been issued, so it's a matter of scheduling, so.
That's good.
There, it's all, it's been done as well. Yeah, alright.
So now that we're waiting on the map.
Well, the, the map was provided, the map was provided color-coded by staff and Chelsea that day. Then I guess it, I will say, go back and tell us again, because I, I recall three areas. Go back and tell us the three areas that you're disputing that are not yours. And, and then we'll get clarification from Tony. If they are either yours or ours. And, and that's what's gonna say. If they're yours, you're responsible. If they're ours, we're responsible.
Yes.
So at the very least, for the three months, February, March and April, that mainscape was paid to cut that extra space that they didn't cut. Why don't we let them cut May, June and July? Because they already got the money.
I would.
You didn't get. You didn't get it, you didn't get a discount, right? You paid them the same monthly amounts.
So in other words, that was a credit, but it's projected.
No.
It's not real right now.
Past tense, you're saying last year.
The, the contract was amended, uh, I believe it was the, uh. The October first one, I, I verified that they are billing us at the lower contract rate currently. So they're, they have not been paying.
That's what I thought because your first meeting was in November. That's what I thought, because your first meeting was in November. So in October, they already rectified the price. In November, you had your meeting.
So they kept cutting until February first and didn't get paid?
Yes.
Manscape?
Yes.
Same Manscape that we've known to use?
Alright, so it's four o'clock. Nobody else? Nobody online? Okay, that's all. Alright, so. Go ahead and uh local achievements and recognitions. Do we have anybody?
We do. So um one of our employees will be leaving the district, Ryan um Ellsworth. He gave notice, um he'll be going uh to Tetra Tech. And so I just wanted to put it on record that we appreciate his years of service. I think he's been here a little over three years. He's worked in Parks and Rec and Utilities, um but we will be sad to miss him. Um or it'll be, you know, with his leaving, and we wish him the very best and thank him for his dedication to the district.
Alright, and I did see something online for Vicky as well.
Yeah, we we do get some um comments, customer care comments and appreciation posts, and so. We try to highlight those on social media so the community can see the customer service.
Alright, perfect. Alright, um advisory committees and items to report and reports.
Don't.
Yes, I went to the last uh Parks and Rec uh advisory committee. You will have uh two people. Uh that are coming before you. I was very, very pleased with the two people that they chose. They will, they will now have their committee uh completely staffed. Um so they'll have their seven people there and um. Everybody had gone out and looked at the uh the land areas. And uh had done the thing that the board here had requested that they actually physically look at it and see what it's all about. So they are progressing.
You're saying that the two that are before us today for appointment will completely fill the deal?
Correct.
Because I've got.
They will now have seven members.
Because because I have a problem with one of them that I can't support whatsoever. He's not an owner here in this committee.
Oh.
He's not even, he's not even, he's not even a uh uh allowed to vote.
I um I asked that question when we were doing the 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 resolution, that specific question, and. It was not required because I was concerned about that. And he said it's representative or what or anyone really. So so.
The problem is that, well, we're going to get to it, but it it just doesn't fly to have somebody on a committee. That does not live here, does not own, well, I shouldn't say live, does not own here, and certainly doesn't vote here.
Wow.
I mean, I could have somebody from uh Lehigh that come across and say, I want to serve on your Parks and Rec Committee. They're, they're going to be making recommendations to spend money that they don't spend. I thought that, that just doesn't fly. But anyway, we can talk about that later.
Uh anyway, that was my report.
Alright, um did we talk, I ju- I don't recall, did we talk about having the chair of the committees come in and do the reporting? So did he miss today?
We didn't, I didn't send a remind, we didn't send a reminder out to him. If now, is that something the board would like as the either the first or second meeting of the month?
Whatever, when we're doing all the reporting at the same time.
For the second meeting.
For an update, I don't think it'd be a bad idea.
Alright, we will ask. There's no promises, but we will ask that.
Yeah, if they have something to report.
Yes.
Yeah, if they don't have none, exactly. Uh very similar to be back then, I guess. Uh approval of minutes?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second or in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Consent agenda items?
Okay, um I have one question on consent agenda item nine A. And if Laura, if you can go to page sixteen. Of the agenda documents, and there are some dot points there. The under B, the sixth dock point, one, two, three, four, five, six. Addition of an exterior entrance to the south wing and subsequent relocation of that entrance to the boardroom. Does that mean that they are putting another door in an emergency door in the boardroom area?
So the board made had, the board had made some requests um to change. It's it's the covered area we talked about last time that comes directly off of the boardroom.
Okay.
So um these are changes that were reflective of comments that were made as part of the review process. Um and there, it, some of these items caused for major overhaul of the plans. The architectural and H rack and things like that. That's a minor one, but um some of the other um items. Because of added rooms caused for all plan sheets to be updated.
Okay, so I uh gave uh the plans that were on our last agenda. To a friend of ours who's a safety and security person. And he only had one suggestion, and that was that we add another emergency door. Like right behind where the board would sit. So. I don't know which sign, but basically right behind here, not to be used other than for emergencies. It'd be emergency only. Um because if you have a full, a full room for some reason. And so I don't know, you have a fire alarm or something or other. Sixty, I think the capacity for that room was sixty people. Sixty people trying to get out of one entrance is kind of tough. Um so at least you would have two emergency exits. One would be the regular door that people would come in and out of, but you would have another one right behind where the board would sit.
So the main corridor door from the building itself into the room, it's locked on the other side because you can't get through. In the boardroom side, if you have to get out. I'm trying to answer.
I don't, I don't.
There, there are two means of ingress and egress for that room.
Right now.
So if you're, yes, existing. So um we've already submitted plans, but I can have Tetra Tech look at that and consider that.
If you could, I thought tha- that was what they were talking about, but obviously I was wrong. That's why. So yes, I would like to have them look at that, look at an emergency door right behind the board. Whichever way my back would be facing, I don't know which way.
In this, in this environment with gun violence, it's probably a very appropriate thing to do.
Well, there would be.
Somebody would come in the audience. The board's ducks with no way to get out. I'm I'm being half humorous, but.
Yeah, well, I mean, I figure Tony's in front of me, so it's okay.
Yeah, Carol and I already had that conversation.
Yes, yes. Tony said he was going to take the first one.
So just, just so, just so we're clear, the main, so if this were the the proposed room. There would be a door to the back, that is the main double, double door, and then there's a door, there's a door here.
Yes.
So then you'd like an additional door back here.
Or be anywhere they want to put it.
Breakaway somewhere.
But just another one for emergency use only.
You talking about?
I don't mean regular ingress and egress.
To south side.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll, I'll look.
So anywhere here.
Th- this is Eric Faiat, Tetra Tech. I can speak to that.
Oh, hey, Eric.
Hi, Eric.
I meant to be there in person today, but I'm homesick, so I apologize. Um, the boardroom does presently have three doorways, the the main entrance uh from the interior corridor. The auxiliary entrance, that's the point of the uh uh change order there is on the east side of the boardroom. Facing the parking lot. And then we did, we do have an emergency exit door opposite that on the west wall of the room.
In the back, towards the back, towards the park. Okay, so we have three doors.
Yes, and at one time that door was uh behind the dais at the southeast corner of the building. But in discussion with staff, uh we thought that having a door there could be a distraction if it were used for purposes other than. Uh emergency egress. Uh so it was moved to the west side of the boardroom.
Alright, thank you, Eric.
What they're running is they're talking about putting it behind the board's uh table to be able to exit.
As a emergency use only.
Yes, that was the idea.
As a, as an emergency use only, right?
That exits to the west, being instead of at the north end of the room, be at the south end of the room.
Then it'll be fine.
I don't know how easy that is to do, but.
Again, permits were submitted, so if we did that change, we would have to make the change across all of the plan sets and then resubmit. Across all of the agencies.
Is that a biggie? I I don't know.
It, it takes time. It takes time. Takes, takes quite a bit of time and money.
Well, we haven't broken ground yet, and we haven't gotten to a hundred percent yet. We were just at ninety, so.
Now's the time to do it, if we're gonna do it.
Eric's heard the comment, so we'll take it under consideration.
Thank you. So I move on consent agenda, consent agenda items A, B, C, D, and E.
Yeah, I've got C, D, and E questions.
Okay.
Uh what I would suggest then is to pull them for discussion.
Okay, so let's go ahead. We'll, we're not going to pull yours. You're, you're good, right?
No, no.
Alright.
Mine was the first one.
Okay, so we have, so we'll go ahead and approve B?
No, A.
A, B, A and B have no problems. C and D and E I just want to talk about.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and pull C, D, and E.
I'll move on agenda items.
A and B.
Nine A and B.
A second.
Uh we have a motion in a second or in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So item C.
I'll move on agenda item nine C.
The, the, the question I have on nine C is, but just make sure that I understand this.
Is that a second for discussion?
Second for discussion.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh. We are taking and abandoning and doing away with previous resolutions regarding. Golf carts in Pelican Reserve, replacing them with what I saw as a simplistic deal. Of just do what the county rules.
Laws.
Or statutes, statutes say.
Which state statute requires and.
Dayton County.
And any city of Fort Myers development orders for the DRI, DO. Because there are some conditions for approval from like two thousand one.
Okay, well, my question is protecting us. Because we own this, and if there's a wreck out there or anything that happens, we're going to get sued. What are we doing still relative to registration of golf carts? And proving that people that are using them have insurance?
We, there's no authority to require registration on the part of the district to require the registration. Or to show they have insurance before they operate them. The, that gets back to the enforcement will be by law enforcement. Uh if people are operating.
Law enforcement doesn't, doesn't care about insurance.
Right, I, but I'm, but I'm just saying that law enforcement and the statutes indicate how you can use golf carts in in a retirement community.
So, so we can get, we're, we can allow people to drive golf carts. On those roads, our roads, public roads without insurance?
I'm not saying that. No, no, I'm saying state law says and regulates how golf carts can be utilized. They can be utilized within communities. But just Pelican Reserve, if it's not prohibited by state statute, that's what that one statute says. And to my knowledge, it's City of Fort Myers does not have any prohibition against operating golf carts. Within, let me get the language exactly here.
I, I understand all that, Tony. That's not what my question is. My question is that. How do we, how do we require registration of golf carts? To drive on these roads and have insurance to protect us?
We do not. We don't. It's law enforcement ob- obligation. They want to stop a golf cart and see if they comply with the.
I can tell you right now, you're whistling Dixie, it ain't going to happen. They won't do it. They won't do it. So if somebody gets out there on a golf cart, drunk, has no insurance and has a wreck, we're getting sued. We're up, you what creek, you know what creek, without a path.
Okay, I, I disagree. I mean, I never guarantee result.
I totally disapprove of that.
It's actually, in in a sense, worse, we have no ability to prevent them from using the roads if they do not. If a person's not registered and they don't have the insurance. I'm trying to think, how would we enforce it? We're going to stop a a golf cart and make sure they have the registration.
That's exactly what we do in Gateway.
Well, your private company, your private organization.
Who stops it? Our association.
We're not doing anything in here. We do not have traffic law enforcement authority. It's very clear.
The same could be said. How, how would we know if any car that would come in without insurance?
Well, you, you've got some requirements, I believe, by state law on that, on a golf cart. That all's I'm saying is you, you're crazier than hell doing this.
Well, indeed, the key aspect is to have the signage and the lane markings and. Pavement, striping and everything inconsistent with the development orders and prior traffic studies. If you want to change it, indeed, know the traffic study and get an approval from the City of Fort Myers.
Did the previous resolution that that were done, I know it had some silly stuff, colors and all that deal. Which was ridiculous, but did it have requirements for registration?
Yes.
Did it have requirements for carrying insurance?
Yes, and it was being policed by Pelican Reserve, the government, the P C C A, I believe, not by the district. By the community association.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll let that go to the vote.
And and they may choose to continue that, or they may choose not to do it, because they don't want to be in a golf carts business either. We'll let them speak to themselves.
That, okay.
So, so the, with regards to the signage, the proper signage and MUTCD standards. P PAC has acknowledged that they have to meet those and has requested a task authorization from Tetra Tech to make sure we're compliant. So.
Yeah, I'm not worried about any of that. But I don't have any problem with any of that. My only deal is I know what I've ran into. Over at my place with two hundred golf carts. And unless and until we did registration, we didn't have insurance. We now have insurance from each one, every one. Now, somebody raised the question, you have insurance the day they get the registration form, they cancel it the next day. We catch them, they're dead.
Well.
They're dead. We'll, we'll just, we will not allow them to be on the street.
So let me ask you this. We, we have a detail. I mean, if it comes to it, you know, we don't tell them what to do, but if direction is. To, because soon enough it'll be direction on Griffin for the two schools, and that's where we see the most golf carts. If direction would be like, hey. You know, the golf carts shouldn't be there, and if you need to look at insurance, then then there would, it'll be no different than a car, so that's.
With the fact that these are public roads and our ownership, that complicates the hell out of it.
Well, absolutely, that's the key issue. And for example, those operating golf carts and not LSVs, those speed vehicles. On Gateway Boulevard, Griffin, uh Lee County has the same issue. The only way they enforce it again is through law enforcement.
Yes.
Yeah.
If the board passes this, we would, we would forward this resolution to the City of Fort Myers Police Department. And Lee County Sheriff to let them know that this is effective.
Okay.
Well, Lee County Sheriff will be involved.
Yes, he will. Yes, he'll be doing enforcement, and we pay for the detail.
Why would Lee County if it's in the city of Fort Myers?
They have the authority, county by, but they definitely defer to the city of Fort Myers.
That's wise.
But we.
And and we are currently trying to get Lee County patrols in the community.
Okay.
Well, before you leave, this last thing. At the present time, there's a system in place. That we request our residents to register and get a sticker from the management company. But there's no enforcement of it. So a lot of people have the stickers on their cars, but you'll see, or carts, but there's. Some significant number that don't have, and we don't enforce it today as a community. We never have. See, we have a hundred dollar day fine for violation of cop driving without a sticker.
But we don't have an enforcement here. So to us, it would be really, if we, if we in the gateway side adopt something very similar. Then we can give the same instructions for the guided as our detail, we're paying a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, right? On that contract to take care of it and and mirror the same thing and then do the enforcement on our end. We're already paying for it. We just need to give them directions, not tell them what to do.
Thing in this resolution prohibits the community association from doing just that. I don't know that they want to, but that's. I'm just trying to figure out, how do we protect what we're bound to do, protect? And that's this place right here.
Yeah, it might be getting two, two points. One is, as Mr. Gafford raised, uh for example, in Fiddler's Creek, those are district roads. Uh in Fiddler's Creek, Fiddler's Creek Parkway, Championship Drive, all those. The Master Association Foundation has rules and regulations governing its members. Which are everybody that lives there as to how to operate and how to act, how to behave. They have a process where they will think, see a golf cart or see anything else, will utilize their process. The C D has nothing to do with that process. So that's what I've mentioned before. Some associations, attorneys believe that that can take place on a public road. From the standpoint of the operation, again, the people, if they're going to operate golf carts, they need to operate them in compliance with the state statute. And there are requirements in there of how they have to operate them. Uh I've just read recently they're planning on raising the age to sixteen, not to, you know, not, not. Right now it's fourteen.
It's fourteen.
For how to drive. But that gets back to the, the method of enforcement is through law enforcement. It's, it's the best way. They can be stopped by law enforcement, say, do you have registration? Do you have insurance?
You know, that's, that's, that's in a dream world.
I know, I don't, I understand.
Not going to happen.
But the district has no traffic law enforcement.
Okay, don't, let's go on.
Nor does the community.
Alright.
Parks and Parks and Recreation, the only thing I got on that. Oh, you want to vote on them as you go? Nothing else.
I already made the motion.
Okay, so we had a motion and we had a second for discussion. Let's call it for vote. Everyone in favor, say aye.
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 Your parks and.
Opposed.
Thanks. Thanks. Parks and Rec, my ideal list, I have a real. I'm sorry?
Port one.
The D, the.
Nine D.
Nine D. The gentleman that does not own in this community and is not voting in this community, I have a real problem with that. I think that's setting a, that, that, that just doesn't pass any smell test with anybody I know. I, that'd be like me going in and giving my opinion in Naples. I don't live there. I don't pay taxes there. I don't vote there. Why should I be listening to anybody that falls in those categories? I think we've got people here in this community that would be willing to serve that are owners and are voters in the community.
So the only, only thing I have there is, and maybe there's just a different way to handle this, but I think what we would like to have on these committees is, is, you know, with this, if we take this stance, would it preclude us from having individuals that are maybe subject matter experts in, in the area? Would those not be committee members? Would they just be? I, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't have a, I don't necessarily have a problem with someone on a committee that doesn't live in the community if they have a tie to the community. And as long as whatever subject matter, there, whatever subject matter of, of the committee that they're, that they're sitting on, that there's a, there's a viable, you know, benefit or reason for them to be on, whether it's such a matter expert or, I mean, if, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I see where you're coming from, Ed, but I'm wondering if, if we take this stance, if it would exclude other individuals that may provide value on these committees from being excluded in the future.
If they aren't paying taxes here and they're not an owner and they don't, and they don't vote, that bothers me. They don't vote.
But these are all recommendations, right? I mean, they're not taking any action. We take the action.
Well, I, I actually wanted Tony to get clarification on this because I, prior to us even adopting this, uh, when the draft came, I think that was one of my questions. You know, or who will be serving on it? And so, do you have it in front of you? Are you?
Yeah, the resolution, yes. It says, the committee shall consider this time of seven, each of whom shall be appointed by the board. And when appointed, shall serve for an maximum of two years. Must be residents or representatives of property owners within the gateway portion of the district and who are in good standing with the district. They at least have to be a resident. And I think the focus of the representatives of property owners was you may have some commercial industrial property owners who are paying the special assessments.
So my question is a resident, because the gentleman, it's not a property owner, but it is a resident of Gateway. So with the resolution that we have, he will be.
He, he could qualify. He qualifies as a resident. It's within the board's discretion.
Okay.
Appointed person. And if the board wants to change it to qualified electors, which is the term used for those who can serve on the boards or registered voters residing within the boundaries of the district. And again, they don't have to be owners to be a registered voter. Example, a board member doesn't have to be an owner. If you look at chapter one ninety, and I'll read that real quickly.
So while he's doing that, that we did have three applicants for the two positions. And so the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee voted on, um, and, and all three did participate and kind of give a little spiel of, of their history and background and, and why they're interested. And the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee had made the recommendation for these two, which is why they're in front of you right now.
Yeah, yeah. And again, bear with me, just quickly definitions. A qualified elector, but it gets, it has to be a registered voter. A qualified elector, any person at least eighteen years of age, is a citizen of the U S, a legal resident of Florida and of the district, and registers to vote with the supervisor of elections which the county is located. So a person who wants to run for office or people who vote for you, board members, they do not have to be owners within the district.
But they do, do have to be registered.
Registered voters residing within.
And this one is neither.
Okay, so Chelsea, I do remember, I think Carol was gone. But one, the, the person, the applicant came in, he'd had an issue with his application because he, it was a PDF file and he was editing. And I do recall something that he said, I, I checked one item, but I didn't mean that. Was that the voters?
I don't recall. I, I don't recall.
So Ed, are you speaking of Mr. Ruth or Mr. Moore?
The other one, the other one looked like he was a owner and a voter. Uh, Mr. Ruth is, and I, I know where he lives.
I can, I can see if Mr. Ruth is a, a registered voter, because I do recall.
He says on his own application.
No, I do recall him mentioning that when he was filling out the application, he, he also bought a paper version. He says, look, I just looked. I made a mistake in one thing. I don't remember what one thing was. It was something that was clicked to the next. Do you recall that?
Yeah.
I can look it up real fast.
I was just going by the application he submitted and it said no.
Are you checking? Okay, okay. I'll let you check.
You already did?
I started.
Well, you might be faster than.
Well, anyway, that's. Would be potentially available to apply for that, that position.
Well, if the advisory committee recommended it.
And I'll say that's a gentleman that it's a resident that it's, it, it's very involved in our community. We, you know, so I don't want, I mean, we see him often here. So it is somebody that is involved. And I'm, I'm on the same path as well.
Well, I will move to approve agenda item nine D as in dog as recommended by the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee.
No, second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Four one.
And the last one, great Gateway Street signs, this one's really more than a deal, repairs. Are, are these the, is this the identification of the stuff that was just hurricane related? It, it's nothing to do with any of the other signs. Replacement.
Correct. Lykins has had the sign since the hurricane and he grossly apologized for how long it took. But we did get this last week, so we'd like to get this signs repaired and back in place.
It's actually an updated version of a quote that we had gotten when they came to pick up the signs originally.
Did we incorporate this number into our?
I did. I did update it and I sent it to their insurance company.
Are, are there any Pelicans on it?
Motion to approve ninety then.
I'll second.
So we have a motion in a second. All in favor? District manager, I mean, district engineer.
We, I don't believe we have.
Good afternoon. I'm Stephen Agathe, Tetra Tech District Engineer. I'm on the line. Um, there's a couple items coming up. I'm just hanging out for, if you guys need me, I'm here.
Thanks, Stephen.
Stephen, did you hear the discussion earlier relative to the complaints made on Pond sixty-two specifically?
Yeah.
To all the issues.
I think it was for Margaret, right? Is that correct?
There were several here that were very concerned, including me, uh, and I think Bob and Flavia as well. This construction, uh, uh, in, uh, Stony Brook did not appear to meet, and I just certainly agree with them, did not meet what we have seen heretofore by that contractor on ponds through the rest of Gateway. I saw stuff up there that would have never, ever been accepted on any of the other ponds. Uh, I just wanna make sure that this isn't gonna come back and bite us on the backside. Uh, the first time we get a good gully washer and that thing starts settling out, because I, I just did not like the way that fabric looked before and while they were putting stone on it. It looked like, to me, it needs, needed some work.
Under it. Right.
Under it, yeah.
So I did hear the, 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 um, some of the concerns. I'm gonna call Margaret afterwards, so I can just talk to her and get a better idea of what they were. It was hard to hear in the meeting. Um, but yeah, we do have a walkthrough coming up in two weeks, so we'll, we'll be able to address any items. And as you mentioned, they do have a warranty period, so we'll be able to.
Make sure that you've got located the points at where, uh, compaction tests were taken. So we have those memorialized, that if we start having failures in places where you didn't take compaction tests and obviously can't take a compaction test every foot around a pond. But, uh, I don't know, who, who picked out the location of where the compaction test was to be done?
They, they follow, there's a, who is universal, follows the spec, which I believe is every so hundred feet, they have to take a density. Um, so they, they follow that spacing.
Who, who instructs them, puts a flag out or whatever methodology, paint, paint or whatever? Who, who told them where to take the test? Did they do it on their own?
I know they, I'm pretty sure they do it on their own based on however many feet. They are directed to, you know, as far as vertically, to take the density within the work zone.
Okay. Now, well, that's my question. I just wanna know at this point in time, because it's water over the dam. The big thing I wanna know now is where did the water go over the dam? So if we know where the locations are and we have failures in the future within the next year in the warranty period, and they're not in the area of where the tests were taken, uh, there might be a, an I told you so coming down the road.
Right. Yeah. So when they provide density reports, it tells us an address and however many feet west or east of that address or north, south.
Yeah.
Um, so that, that's kind of how we know the approximate location of the density.
And then the other issue that, uh, Margaret was talking about, which seemed to me to be more an aesthetic look, uh, that was the finished product up above where they were taking their equipment in, which did impact the ground. Didn't they go in and do any repairs, uh, scrape, scraping up the ground, refueling sod, filling in low spots, any of that that were caused by the wheels of the compacting of the soil? Uh, did they just ignore that?
So that's like, that typically does come up on every lake and they do address that, um, during the close of it.
Well, that's what I thought.
Yeah, I don't know if, I don't know when those concerns were noticed, but, um, you know, we'll make sure they are taken care of before they're out of there.
Okay, okay, okay.
And I had one question about the change order for the, uh, the area that wasn't originally in the scope that had all the valleys. Is that gonna be fixed before, uh, the final inspection? I think you said it was a change order for them to now incorporate this new area.
Give me the curve on that one.
Stephen, do you know if Matt Towers planning on mobilizing back to the site to fix that one area or we can't do the final walkthrough until that, that gets completed?
Based on our meeting we had last week, I think they're projecting to ha, to start that work, um, either next week or the following week.
Long as it's done before the final inspection.
The final inspection's a couple of weeks out.
Okay.
I just have one question. There was a drain, a boulder, a drain box on that location that they couldn't figure it out. It was attached to whatever home. Do we, do you know if one was installed on that property on sixty-two?
I, I'm not.
I'm not familiar enough on that. I mean, if there was a line they intercepted, they would have installed a drain box though, or they should have.
Okay, so, so they didn't because we saw, uh, when they were actually putting the number four rock, the pipe, the black corrugated pipe was still sticking up, uh, you know, above the grass. And after they put the grass down, I did not walk to that location, but the pipe was no longer visible. So my question is, was that box installed? Was just the pipe buried?
Okay, yeah, that's good to know. Um, do you know if it was on the north or south side of sixty-two? Or east? Yeah, southish. I got you.
Yeah, it was the second home.
From the street?
Yes.
Okay, I'll follow up with Wyatt this afternoon. Thank you.
Anything else for the district engineer?
We, we actually have, uh, we have a representative here. Uh, James is here from Lane Christensen Company regarding our next agenda item.
Just the bid for the. Okay.
Hi, my name is James Brunio. I represent Lane Christensen. When I say represent, I work for them. I'm the area manager. We're here in Fort Myers, Florida. So I said, what, I'm here because a couple of days ago, we received a note um, saying that the district manager and district engineer intends to reject our bid. And then when I'm reading the agenda items, it, it almost seems that you guys are gonna authorize. So do you wanna read the agenda items first? My point is, my point is we, there was three pre-bid meetings for this, this project. The first one was a mandatory pre-bid meeting and Lane's Carlos Fajardo attended that mandatory meeting. So, and we are the only contractor to attend it. Um, so the district decided to throw the bid or the, not even bid the project, because we would have been a shoo-in, you know, being the only attendee. So we were fine with that. So there was another pre-bid meeting. It was a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting and, and Lane's Carlos Fajardo also attended that meeting and we're the only contractor that attended the meeting. Uh, since it was a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting, that means other, there was other plan holders too. They just didn't set, they decided not to go to the meeting, I suppose. So we, um, part of the specification, uh, would not allow us to drill twenty-four hours a day and seven days a week. And, and as a well driller, that's what we prefer. That's the safest way to do work, uh, when you're drilling a well. Uh, so the district would not allow us to drill twenty-four seven, so we no bid the project. That was the second time. Now, there was a third pre-construction meeting and, um, we attended. I, I attended that along with, uh, with our project manager, Ethan Neves, attended the pre-bid meeting. And it was also a non-mandatory and there was other plan holders that had, had plans and they didn't attend. So we went ahead and, and submitted a bid. Um, we were the only bidder and we assumed that you guys were gonna award the work because you needed the well, but now, now we got that note a couple of days ago saying that you guys are not gonna award the work. So I'm curious why. And, and let me just say one more thing. There was Randy, uh, Pinagua, I guess is, I don't know, um, he's, I don't know what he does for y'all. He's like the project manager or some. He said that if we would have bid this project the second time, we would have had a chance to negotiate with y'all. I think the, I think the, maybe the lawyer, the district's lawyer said that we would have had a chance to negotiate. So that's why I'm standing before you today. I want a chance to negotiate with y'all. And, and, and I'd rather you not throw this thing out to, you know, out for rebid. Uh, I'd rather just negotiate. Now, part of the project, we're a well drilling company and a pump company. That's what we do. And part of the project includes several hundred feet of electrical conduit, electrical wire. Part of the project includes, uh, raising the grade of the site, chain link fencing, pipeline work. That's all stuff that we have to subcontract out. And when we subcontract that out, we have to mark it up. Or, you know, we're a business. We're a for-profit. We hope to make profit. Uh, so we have to mark that stuff up. So, so our point of view is if, if you allow us to negotiate with y'all, we, we would rather just drill the well and, and, and leave it capped. And then later on, you guys could hire electrical contractors and pipeline contractors and dirtwork contractors to do all the other work. And you'll save money in the long run. So that's my piece.
I have some questions. I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm just confused on the note. Like, so who did you get information that we were not going to go with your bid?
That's a great question. Well, let me, let me, let me pull the, let me pull you up.
But let me be clear. The.
Let, let him answer and then I'll come to you. Cause that's if we can, if it's from staff, or is it from, I mean, if you wanna speak, I, I'll ask that you come to, if, if you speak, then I want you to come to the podium. It's okay.
Come on. This is Carlos Fajardo. He's also with Lane.
Yeah, Gateway submitted a notice of intent and it says, notice is hereby given that at the Board of Supervisors meeting on May fourth, twenty twenty-three, the district manager intends to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the word of the above referenced bid be rejected and the project delayed as recommended by the district engineer.
Okay, so then.
Yes.
Go ahead.
The dis, the district engineer, Tetra Tech, Fred Mittel, uh, reviewed the submittal. And it, between him and his recommendation is to reject it as well as mine. Um, there were a handful of issues with the, the actual submittal itself, but, um, this is the third time, like the gentleman have stated, that we put this out to bid. This is S R F funded. Um, we, which is part of the reason why we rebid it a couple of times to see if we can get the funding. Um, this project is, um, it's an important project, but, um, this, it's my understanding Kenny had originally started this project because we, we have currently one lower Hawthorne well. This would provide redundancy. Um, and as you know, uh, we are in a very dry season and we've been managing thus far, knock on wood. So it is my recommendation to reject this and delay it until the fall, until the dry season of twenty twenty-three. And the engineers as well.
Go ahead.
I got a couple of questions. I, I can quickly get to that. I, I can quickly get to that same position, but I'm going to take it a different road. Uh, first of all, why did you not use the engineer's bid schedule?
Uh.
I've never seen that done in forty years of my business as an engineer.
I, I've never ever seen that. That's a great question, sir. I, I assume we did use the engineer's.
No. You guys bid on your own, own schedule. I've never seen anything like it. And I'm, I'm, the first thing it tells me when you do that is I, as the engineer screwed up. Because I left something out or you couldn't interpret what I thought of where you were going to put certain costs that were not delineated in the, in the schedule. And if you're paying based on that, a lot of contractors will watch that because they can get burned if something was dropped out by a change order and you put money in there that let's say caused an unbalancing of the bid. That wouldn't look good. So I thought maybe that's what you did. That was item number one that bothered me, really bothered me because I've never seen anybody do that before. Then the biggest one I've got is that the differential, our engineer's estimate of this project was a little south of eight hundred thousand dollars. You were a little bit north of one point eight million dollars. That is a million dollar spread. I, 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 I mean, I can't even picture being off that much. What do you know that we didn't know that cost that much for this project? Because I looked down the list of trying to take your bid schedule and apply it to his bid schedule of where he did his estimate to be able to do an apples and apples across it. It was too complicated.
Yeah, so.
It was too complicated.
Yeah, that's.
So I guess my just basic question to you is, is that why would this cost a million dollars more than what we had estimated?
Um, okay, that's great. The, the, it's common that engineers are the low bidders, uh, in our business and construction in general. Uh, I'd, I'd ask you the question back to you.
I can't deny that.
Yeah, that's right. Exactly.
It happens.
Yeah, it, yeah.
It's not purposeful.
Right, that's right. And we, it's, it's common though in our business. But my question to you was, when was that engineer's estimate, uh, established?
I don't, Fred or, uh, Steven, what, 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 what was the date of our estimate and what was the basis of our estimate? Did, did something change in the scope of the work that changed the engineer or that would have resulted in the engineer's estimate being so drastically different than the bid?
Hey Ed, so I don't have intimate knowledge with this project. It was Fred's project and our hydrogeologist's project. Um, I know the estimate was prepared prior to the first, uh, bid letting. Um, that's essentially the information I know, but I mean, we have one bidder. It's kind of a sign of the times.
Typically when I have a bid opening, or I'm sorry, a pre-bid meeting, uh, and I, I, I can't think of a place where I didn't have it happen. One bidder or another will ask me as the engineer, what's your estimate? And so I guess at that meeting, if that question wasn't asked, then you didn't know that the estimate was a million dollars less than what you were looking at. If it was asked, I would have thought somebody would then said, at least on our side, is wait a minute here, what's going on here? There's a big difference between eight hundred thousand and one point eight million. What, let, let's reconsider what we're doing. You're, and the fact that we only got one bid, that makes it very difficult to compare it with anything else other than our engineer's estimate. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out is that if we rebid this thing in the fall, in November, going into dry season.
Still be here.
I, I'm, I'm not worried about it being one point eight million. I'm worried about it being two point two million.
So.
That's what I'm worried about.
The, this, again, this is funded through SRF.
I know.
We do not have enough funding in the existing project. If we were to award this against the engineer's recommendation, um, we would have to go to SRF and ask for additional funding.
Okay, well, that's information that we certainly need. Uh, well, I think those were my two big things. One, I was shocked on the bid schedule and there could be a reason to that, but I didn't see anything in the, uh, uh, engineer's recommendation, but that million dollars really scared me a lot.
So also to, to help with this conversation, the market and, and these gentlemen could probably speak to it better than I can, but the market is, is booming right now. And we would be racing mother nature for drilling this well with rainy season right around the corner. And we all know that, that area back there where it's intended to be drilled would be inundated by water. Um, there is some opportunity in, in the feedback that we've gotten is to, um, consider if we were to rebid this in the fall, taking out the electrical components and doing that as a separate standalone from the well drilling, understand that, understanding the.
That's not a very wise decision.
But.
Breaking this up into components. I want a, I want one contractor.
Turkey.
I.
I want one contractor. I don't want to have five contractors and then doing this. No, 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 no.
I don't disagree.
Yeah, I don't want to do that. I will pay the extra to have one contractor use of it. I'll pay the ten to fifteen percent markup. That's life in the big city. Like you said, you got to make return on what you're doing. I don't have a problem with that, but I do want responsibility.
But trading a year as staffs recommended because this isn't urgent, it's desirable. That makes sense to me too. But I, I agree with it.
Sure. I'll tell you something. Right now we're bidding another project just so you have a, and I can show you those documents. It's not this exact same well drilling, but only the well is one point eight five million dollars. Just the well. And here you have well, pump, uh, pipe fence, electrical.
Same, same going to eight hundred feet.
Oh, it's twelve hundred. This is eight fifty. It, but it's only the well. And here you have pump, that only the pump, motor, pipe, electrical.
Well, I, I, I'm just trying to figure out, something just went awry between seven fifty and one point eight million.
Yeah, but.
Something went awry.
To, to his point is there are wells in, in, in Fort Myers, just the well alone, not a pump, not any of that other stuff. And they're the same depth and they're a million dollars. So you guys are, I mean, it's, you can't get a well for under a million dollars.
Ed, your point about the, the, um, how it was submitted and not on the, the engineer's schedule values was.
That to me concerns me. That, that to me concerns me the most, I think. Well, the price taken that.
Well, that's why I was trying to find out. I, I'd looked at it and I was having difficulty trying to figure out why we couldn't use the original, other than the fact.
I'm curious too.
I've had bidders tell me that I just didn't know where to put the money and I've been burned before by change orders that if I put the money in A and you change A, I lose it. Yeah, it's, I've, I've had that. So I, I, I like to have my bids on my bid form that I know what I've got. I would have thought that somebody that in your, uh, organization would have called the engineer and said, hey, we, we can't fill out this bid schedule because there's places or costs that we've got that are not enumerated.
Oftentimes what we'll do is, is copy a bid form verbatim and then because it's easier for us to type on whether we make it on.
Well, technically every bid form I've ever seen has a place for the contractor to sign it.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I want the contractor's signature on the bid form.
Sure, sure, sure. I understand.
And if you put, turned in your own, uh, I, I don't, I don't know. It just didn't make sense to me. I'm, I'm sort of, sort of leaning, leaning toward going back like what Bob said, and that is to, let's, let's kick the can down the road on this one. But well, I'll tell you what, what scares me is what's at the end of the road. If we only got one bidder and we come back to November and we got one bidder, I know if I was that one bidder, you ain't getting one point eight million next, next time. It'll be two point two.
One point six.
One point, yeah, that, that dog don't hunt. Well, I, for the record, what scares me is the having where you get, I mean, I just can't believe that we're not getting competition on bidding. Do you not have any competition?
We have plenty of competition. Uh, we have a lot of competition, uh, small companies that, that are here. We have companies coming down from, uh, from middle Florida to work, got companies coming in from the East Coast to work. So, uh, yeah, there's plenty of competition, but there's also a lot of work out there.
And that, that's, that's kind of went along with what you're saying. Now, I thought I heard you mention a name differently than what we have here on this. Is, is it Lane Christensen?
Yeah, Lane Christensen, yeah.
What were you, I thought you were saying something else.
No, Lane Christensen.
Okay, maybe I didn't understand your drawl.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, okay. That's all I have. I, I've never seen this happen before like this.
Okay, so we want to.
Well, wait, wait, he brought up something that we need to get squared away. You implied that there was a possibility of a negotiation. Tony, what's the deal with that?
I'm not sure how it ended on me suggesting that. It's an email where they suggested it, Carlos. There's an email I found. That's my understanding.
And it was, it was told by your, the, the staff of the district, uh, during the third, was it the third?
No, it was the second. So the second, fine.
So let me, let me help clarify this. The second, the second time it was bid out, Lane provided a no bid, but as part of their no bid letter, they said that they were open to negotiations. And so we, with a no bid letter, could not negotiate. So that's why we had to put it back out to bid.
It's SRF. We can't negotiate.
That's what I mean. All of a sudden, I, I don't recall ever giving any advice to negotiate. I think, again, it was suggested by.
Well, I just wanted to make sure because if there was a opportunity for negotiation, then we got some latitude right now. But if there's no, I, I've done SRF most of my life and that was, that word never came up, simply bid.
Yeah.
So.
I don't think we had the authority to.
Negotiate.
Or to imply that we can even negotiate.
So to, to be clear, these gentlemen have been very, um, active and have shown interest in all three times. Um, so.
I see that.
I just want to make that clear, but it, like I said, it is, it is our recommendation right now, um, to reject the bid and delay it until the fall and re, and bid it back out then. We have fi- I, I believe it's five years with the SRF funding to complete the project.
Okay, so Madam Chairman, I move to reject the bid, uh, from Lane Christensen.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do I have a second? A second? So let's call it a vote. Favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is Doug still on?
Yeah.
And, and only say, only to say.
I'm sorry, I, I caught that.
We come back to you guys on this because a million bucks is a million bucks. Uh, I, I, I can talk a long time. I can sell ice to Eskimos.
Doug, what was your?
I can't explain to the public why I would have taken a bid that's a million dollars more. I just have a hard time doing that. And it, it could be what you're telling us is, is totally factual and we're, we're just going to have to revise our budget if that's the case.
All right.
Well, for the record, thank you for, you guys cost us money. Being, you know, we, we gave you a good, a good bid. You guys cost us money. Whether or not we are interested in working with you in the future.
I understand that. I understand that. Thank you.
So the next item was contingent on this item. So if you would like to, um.
This, that's what I thought this was.
Yes.
So I, I would, I would re, uh, suggest we, uh,
Deny.
pass on eleven B until we find out. But I really would like to have somebody contact some of these other people that do this work and just ask them, one, why didn't you bid it? And if you did have the time to bid it, are we in the ballpark? Because there's a hell of a difference between seven hundred thousand and one point eight million.
We can look and see if any other municipal entities have put these types of things out to bid recently and see what those prices have come back.
Well, and I, I want to, I want to state too that what Chelsea said, it, this is not a critical project right now, and I think we've got other things. So I think we're being physically responsible to do more.
Is this issue here and change in a heartbeat.
No, I understand.
Dry period and we need water, uh, unless you can get out there and spit, it, you've got a problem. Because we are really hurting on relying on the current capacities to pro- to provide that ten thousand gallon per minute we got to have.
You just look at what City of Fort Myers is doing. I think they got three or four wells under construction right now.
Yeah, so we, we definitely need it and I wouldn't want to wait to the point where you have to have it. Uh, then, then your vulnerability is really out.
Yeah, Billy does.
This well as long as I've been.
Oh, I know it. We, we know we got a problem.
So the, this is, this is an Achilles heel for the district, but we are getting ready to go into rainy season and hoping that we would have to pull less out of these wells to sup- to supplement.
Well, I'd like to find out some answers to questions that are heretofore unanswered and that is what happened. How this happened.
So far off.
Yeah.
So we will follow up with the engineer.
Yeah.
The risk of jumping into policy, man. In my other districts, capital projects that are being bid, number of engineering firms, different engineering firms and different capital projects have provided opinions of probable cost when the parties go into the bidding process. And the bids are coming in fifty to a hundred percent higher than the engineer's opinions or probable cost.
Thank you for that good news.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's just, it's a factor of the number of items. I mean, I'm not, I'm not apologizing or standing up for anybody, but that's been, I've, I've been big eye openers for a lot of the.
But, but Tony, when you're bidding the projects though, especially where you have mandatory pre-bids, I, I just have never had one to where the contractors, because a lot of times they like to take and put the engineer on the spot. What's your estimate for this project? I would have thought somebody would have asked that here and then we would have heard, well, it's, our bid's going to be well over that number. That raises the question then what the hell's going on?
I understand.
And then maybe you want to take a second look at it. But this work here, I don't think has a lot of opportunity for making any changes to the plans. It is what it is. And it may be that it's a simple deal that, uh, we just got caught and we have a low bid, the low estimate. So.
We'll follow up with the engineer.
Just see what happens.
So this next item is, um, the, we had a, a small nominal change order for the roundabout.
We could do all these one at a time?
That's up to you.
Okay, I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion on these that are no brainers. This one's a no brainer. Random guy choice. Unless we get Diddy Grimes a septic tank.
No.
So.
Motion to approve eleven C.
Do we have a motion in a second or a favor?
Aye.
Street lights.
This is the one where we're going to take basically all, that proved it.
Yeah.
This D is this the one where we're going to essentially go and take the, for a standard nature?
So this could be an initiative for your next fiscal year's budget because it's not budgeted for this year, or you can choose to move forward with it right now?
Where's the funding coming from if we do it right now?
Reserves.
I'm, I, I, I am absolutely in favor of the project because you come into this community and you hit that roundabout at Commerce Lakes and looks like crap. Those steel bars county design look horrible compared to the rest of the community. The rest of the community, we have the, the Lykan's. Uh, I don't think they were Lykan's to begin with. It was a different company, but they, they're all the same. I just bid these over in our community and we had both Lykan's and Forsight. They're both good products.
Street signs?
Yeah, so, so there, there's the, like, you guys have the decorative as well and polycan, so they're, so they're like green and.
Oh, okay.
The other ones, the ones we have that the company put in are the steel.
You see on the highway.
What I call Lehigh acre sign. Uh, they, they, they look like, they look like.
County signs. They look like.
Highway signs.
So I'm all for it.
So Ed, are you making a motion?
Well, I'm trying to get, is there consensus to take it out of reserve or do we put it in the budget for next year?
I think we take it out of reserves.
I think take it out of reserve.
Yeah, I, I did. I want to take it out of the reserve.
We got enough according to budget now.
Yeah, I would take it out of the reserve.
I thought you guys would go completely the opposite of that.
Hey, there you go, Ed.
The motion to go ahead and take, uh, go with Lykan's, uh, Sign Tech for the, uh, quote of a hundred and seventy thousand, three oh five to make the change of the signs along, is this both Griffin and Gateway Boulevard or just?
It's everywhere. There's a whole list. Yeah.
Everywhere.
Okay, I'll say.
So we have a motion in a second, uh, all in favors?
Aye.
Thanks for going out and getting that because it, this is something that is very.
Yes.
So, um, I do have one, just one follow up on this. I sent you an email regarding this today. Um.
Oh, I saw that.
Eleven E, are we talking?
Yes, it's just, I.
You saw on eleven E?
You talking about eleven E? Lake Bank?
Wait, no, uh, I'm the eleven Z.
You should still.
Sorry, um, I logged and, and I still didn't get a clear answer. So when they went out there, they did a survey of the signs that we knew were damaged plus the ones that needed to be upgraded. Is that what it was?
I believe they're separate because this conversion project came after the damaged sign.
That's the way I read it.
So the, and I sent you, I replied back with an Excel book that was with all of the different sheet.
Yeah.
That.
Raised more questions to me because I'm.
You're just going to be sure it's not duplicative.
Yes.
It's my understanding that hurricane related was separate because that was just replacing that. hurricane related was separate because that was just replacing that existing signs that were decorative that were damaged by the hurricane. Those are, those are over here in this pile that you approved earlier. This is conversion of all of the other metal posted signs throughout the district.
That were originally not decorative and now we're trying to bring them up.
Yes. Yes, that's, that's my understanding of of the two.
All right, and that's going to include the roundabout by the school because those are not the county or our districts. Those are the school district signs.
I'd have to go back and look at the.
So I didn't see that. So that's, the goal is all.
Everything, yes.
But so that area is neither the Lee County and either us is the school district. And then I know if they're gonna install more signs and then those signs as well.
That's all, okay.
Item E, that's in my backyard. Uh, this one here went out and looked at this. This is a, this.
That's massive.
In my opinion, it just does not need to be done right now. Wait until this pond comes up for Lake Bank repair, which I believe is in twenty five.
Yes.
And at that time, put it on with it as a bid item with of our contractor because this is a major uh, a deal that's got to be done. The tree's not only got to be taken out, but when WCI or I don't even say what WCI, what, uh, Westinghouse, they've got boulders that I swear is big as this.
I will.
Size of a little mini Volkswagen that are, I think they put them in there to stabilize the bank. Yeah, oh, they're everywhere. They're everywhere.
So.
And to go in there and take them out right now or to put in sand and fill and do it right now is just a waste of time because it's just gonna settle. Best thing to do is defer this until we do pond one oh nine. And at that time, have the contractor take them out, remove the trees and the rock and bring in the selected fill, return it to grade, compact it, and then put in the armor.
Just for your, your clarification, we did get an estimate from that tower to to come in, pull the trees, pull the rocks, grade it, put it back, put it as it should be, and it comes out to eight thousand seven hundred and forty seven dollars. So just for.
If if they did, if they did anything, and I I wouldn't even recommend it, is to handle it as a point repair, but since we're two years away. I don't, I I don't think it's worth.
Where's one oh nine on schedule?
Twenty twenty five.
Twenty five.
Okay, so it's just two things. So regarding liability, because I actually went back there. It it's massive. Is any way that we could use that Armamax is there?
Oh, it's all.
No, it's still out there. And then the field that we already have by the dog park and just literally, we're not buying anything. Exactly, which is get the field that we have by the dog park, put it in there and get the Armamax and like triple layer because we have a ton there and we're not going to be able to use that for any other point repairs. We're not going to be able to use because it the warranty is out because it was out in the sun. So that, to me, that is a perfect, because it it's massive to do it here. What do you think of that?
Just like a bandage.
Just as a bandage.
Twenty five.
Don't.
Hold it. There's, there's two issues. What you don't see in this picture is the oak tree. There's an oak tree that's about twenty five feet to the right of whoever this is standing here. And the roots are, if you really want to see a graphic of if you just took the earth at an oak tree and sliced down and peeled it away, the roots coming out of that tree going out into the lake are unbelievable. It it's a perfect example that don't ever try to do a lake improvement project and think you're gonna get around the roots of an oak tree. It ain't gonna work. But the question would be is are you going to address it at this time or defer it and only do this tree here that got toppled by the hurricane?
I I took a picture of the oak tree too, though. Tried to pull it, but I would only do this one because I'm afraid of like here, like you can actually walk and you can put your foot through it and go down.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Well, hold on, because we did after Hurricane Ian, we told residents that if a tree on their property that is not a part of the Lake Bank required DO trees that fell and 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 was down, that they were responsible for removing the tree.
That's correct.
And so this, this would be in that same situation. The gentleman has said that he is not interested in removing the tree. He feels like it might survive. And that he doesn't want the, he does not want the rocks to be removed.
Well, I I think.
In the rocks, if I have never seen anything like it in the US or in Brazil, the tree are pointed in the rocks.
Leave it alone until twenty five.
That's what it, to avoid that issue, because you're, you're talking about eight thousand dollars that that even he will come back and say, hey, I'll just leave it there until twenty five. I'll live with it.
He's all make a motion.
I want to talk to Tony regarding the, I I'm, because it is on the LME and I understand that it is not a tree that is required by the DO. But we are responsible for the maintenance of the LME. And so if you're gonna stay there, then I would say would I have to be fencing to twenty twenty five with an orange fence? Because I mean, it is, it is dangerous.
First, yeah, the LME, the purpose, yeah, is to be able to maintain and operate the lake and stormwater management system. And so then we have vendors that'll be utilizing that area. And so this is a hazard arguably to the vendors and or to if the property owner is going to, and if somebody gets injured, you're gonna come after the property owner and easement holder. That's the district. And so I would suggest that the better course of action were to, would be to remove that.
Well, I didn't think you'll have any issue with the own, I'm I'm not speaking for him, but I I have talked to him. I don't think he'd have any problem if you come out and did a point repair. But what you're telling me is the point repair is gonna cost us about nine thousand bucks.
Yes.
But removing the tree, it's it's in the way of performing the lake maintenance functions.
I'm sorry.
The the tree is in the way of performing lake maintenance functions, correct?
There's no doubt about the tree has got to come out, in my opinion. I don't know how you could possibly ever. Uh, what was, the the problem is you've got these huge boulders under, show, show the, uh, scan that up to so we see where you're in the lake looking back. Not that one. Not that one.
That's the.
Okay, there you go. That's what's underneath the tree. There's.
There's about ten. I mean, all over.
Smaller.
So, so the repair quote, if I could just read the scope of work, which is to the about almost nine thousand dollar quote, remove the remaining root system and partially living Norfolk Norfolk, place and port fill and regrade at washout site, compact the void caused by upheaved tree, upheaved tree roots, armor with nonwoven geotextile and rocks below control, um, and saw the area, the disturbed area.
To truly support repair.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I think from the liability perspective, looking at that photograph, I mean, it's obviously way out of compliance with any permit criteria.
Oh, the escarpment alone, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that, and so that's a huge, I mean, that's why, two foot drops.
Probably more than a bit of two foot drop, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I mean, that you either have to be marked off, loaned off and or taken care of. There's a liability issue there.
And it is right where our our lake maintenance easement is as well. Like in between the two properties, it's what it is as well.
Would we try to do the point repair basically as a part of the pond bank deal such that when we come back, we're not gonna do it again?
I would hope, but.
That was, that's.
Two, two years go by, you don't know.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with doing it as a point repair. Uh, just it's, it's gonna be salty though.
Stands alone as a, as needing point repair.
Oh, it definitely does.
Well, I guess the question is, do you know where the lake board side of the lake maintenance easement is or where the lake tract is relative to those boulders? Are they in the lake maintenance easement or in the lake tract?
Uh, uh, on the track.
I'd say half and half.
And yeah, and in one side to the left side, they could be in the easement as well because it's it's on the side of the property that goes all the way down from road down.
The the area to where you're going to go to the back of the slope.
Yes.
And refill is still within the LME, but it's, it's getting close to the back of the LME.
Where the rocks are, the boulders are.
Oh, they're definitely in the LME.
Oh, lobby.
If the tree was removed, excuse me, Tony, but the tree's removed, we did the point repair using your suggestion of our old Armamax stuff. Does that come in under less than the eight thousand or is that still within that eight thousand?
We would, we would have a contractor come do that either way. So I I don't know if this counted for them purchasing geotextile or if it would be provided by us. Which we could.
Then if we didn't exceed, but if we did nothing with what we have and we just accepted that, it would be completely handled for nine.
Yeah, for eight thousand seven hundred and forty seven dollars.
So why couldn't we go halfway? Why can't we charge the homeowner for the removal of the tree and then we do the point repair? Is that, I guess that's what you, we didn't, I know Hampton Park had a bunch of requests for the same thing. We told them no. Because yes, we'll do it if there are the lake maintenance easement trees. So they were told no, and I think actually by Judy, there was one that went in the water too, and it was like, no, because that's not. So that's what we want.
I think we're able to.
No, but I I had, that was originally my, that was Flavia, that was originally my, my note to to Tom Thatcher is that, hey, this, if you remove this tree, then we could perform the point repair as needed and again, I'll reiterate, he said he had no desire to remove the tree nor the rocks and that he wished that the rocks stay if and when we do the repair.
Well, that's his wishes and we understand that. We take it into value, but I don't think we have to.
Well, no, no, again, we, we have a tree that's interfering with the season. We have a damage lake and lake maintenance easements and we have a liability by virtue of the drop off in escarpment. And so, but we can't charge him. It just increases the assessments to everybody in the community, including its neighbors because we have additional cost by virtue of implanting that tree.
But in other, other, other places where we've had projects and we've had trees in the LME, we've bid them in with a contract and it's been included in the cost of the project.
There's one more we do.
That's, that's been typical.
But that's waiting two years.
But, but.
But that's waiting the two years. Yeah, so yeah.
Tony's saying we can't wait. This is too bad.
Or can we fence it out and just say?
Yeah, you could. You could fence it.
This is a lot of.
Drop off.
This is a lot of risk for two years.
I mean, it's.
Maybe if we put the ugly fence in.
Or the other one is we just bite the bullet. We we do the damn thing and be done with it.
And that's what I'm gonna move. I move that we uh, do the point repair on the lake bank in carpment.
Lake one oh nine.
On Lake one oh nine. For not to exceed figure of eight thousand dollars.
Eight thousand seven hundred and forty seven.
Eight thousand.
Nine thousand.
Not to exceed nine.
Thank you.
Not to exceed nine thousand.
I'll second that.
And that includes the removal of the tree. Yes, okay. So we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Aye.
Okay, Madam Chairman, I uh, moved to table agenda item eleven F, the release of the developer performance bond for Prado. Um, the uh, homeowner, the Prado homeowner president and Chelsea and uh, the Tetra Tech engineer and myself and one of their board members, David Zimmerman, um, met here actually in this room about a week ago, maybe slightly more. And um, they had some valid concerns and um, both Chelsea and Stephen were very good at explaining to them that we cannot we cannot do anything about problems that are on associate homeowner association property. We can only hold back money for um, GSCDD property and lines and all that sort of stuff. So they, they have gone out again. I gave you a copy of an email that Bob and I and Chelsea all got from um, uh, Mr. Uh, David, um, who is the board member who was present here. And he's, he's much more attuned to the size of pipes and all that sort of stuff. They believe that they have some additional issues and he is working with Stephen uh, to go through these one by one. And I think if we can table this for one more meeting, that we can have something back from them. So I moved to table it for one more meeting.
So if you wanted to take and do a partial release, what you're gonna be doing is you're gonna be losing leverage.
Correct.
So the issue is table it till, I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion and a second to table.
To the, to the May eighteenth meeting.
To the May eighteenth meeting.
Hopefully get it resolved by then.
Mm-hmm. Um.
I think that also puts uh, pressure, you were talking about pressure on the homeowners association to get this done too.
Who's, who's the, uh, this goes back to the developer. Who's the developer on this? Second that motion again.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 H.
Having a nightmare with them.
E schedule?
Uh, G.
Yeah, G.
Uh, I. Before we jump into this one, this one's got me concerned. Uh, and we do this, we accept it under the proviso that we're going to do a test. Let's pick a place, pick a pond. We might want to do one twenty five, that one that we did the first time and did, didn't work. But let's pick a area that that's a true test of what that we want to do on this before we pass it and uh, authenticate it. And let's see how it works.
That's appropriate to.
And see if it works. Validate it as a pilot.
And and why, why Ed? What what are the concerns?
It's gonna fail.
May not work.
That may not work.
Okay.
It's very close to what we did the last time. Very, very close.
And it did or did not work the last?
Casually failed.
Oh, okay.
When you're dealing with soil and on a slope and you go in and do this picture, and I know it's a graphic, but you do that deal, that cutout.
Right.
Compacting that soil back in is fine until you get something that causes an external force, i.e. water coming down. This will take that and allow that thing to scoop out like you're scooping ice cream uh, out of the freezer.
Okay.
It'll just end up in that dirt. See that little dip there? If you get water coming in from the top, which is exactly what happened on the one that failed, that now it was not done with this degree. It just took all the dirt that was in that pile.
Okay.
That had made the slope, put it in the pond, all washed away. I just want to make sure that if we do.
We've had a little more luck with this in Pelican than that I know you guys.
Well, this one here has got a little bit more, let's say, engineering done in it than the one we did at the over there at one twenty five. So I'd be willing to go with it because if it does work, it does look like it's a good way of doing it.
Okay, so your motion then is?
To prove it on a pilot basis. Thank you.
Pond one twenty five? Do you want to set it for that particular pond?
Well, I've got an idea.
Oh, there's a tree on a.
There's, there's a tree on one oh nine to where this might be a very good one to use it on.
I'll have to get the quote amended, but that's, we can do that.
Okay, might be a perfect place to do it. So that'd be, that'd be my motion, but I'm, I'm not telling you out to pick out which pilot, but I think that's an opportunity.
So we have a motion um, to go with G with on a pilot basis and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Do you want me to?
Oh. Do you want me to?
I'm waiting on you, yeah.
So last time we came um, to the board with some con, some concepts, ideas on proposed fees for next fiscal year or sooner rather than later, knowing that some of the leagues are trying to reserve for the fall. Um, so we made those amendments. Um, you sent us home with some homework with regards to separating the league rentals and the cost per fee, the cost per fields. We reached out to Facilitron, um, and you'll see under Sherman Soccer Complex League Rental, um, that range right there, the forty seven to sixty seven is what Facilitron provided as the uh, range for field rentals um, in the state of Florida. Uh, we've got some proposed rates here. Um, and let me know if you have any questions.
You, you put, you passed out. Jump into this.
Well, yeah, well, what is the red?
Red is changed. Red is new. Red is.
The last meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, we, I know we talked about the conference room staying at twenty five.
Okay, I thought I, my note had it at thirty, but I can put it back to twenty five.
The, the question I had that uh, they're attached to the uh, the agenda summary. You had shown prices from Cape Coral, North Geyer and Veterans Park. But I want to make sure that I'm comparing, I didn't see what gateways are now. So what we're seeing is field usage at Cape Coral is one and a half hours, five dollars, then field usage is hourly thirty five and then field usage is hourly twenty. Christ, this is all over the place. So we've got five dollars to thirty five, but yet we're saying here, if I'm seeing this forty seven to sixty seven?
No, that is what.
Florida.
Facilitron has within their um, clients. That's what they charge throughout the state of Florida. Now, we are currently charging twenty, I believe twenty three dollars an hour for the field and then um,
Plus light.
And then lights is twenty. And then lights is twenty-three. And it's a thirty.
So up to speed to this, it just looked to me like that number is immensely higher than our competition right here.
Oh, because one is looking at Florida overall. I'm pretty sure Orlando area, it's like the cost is and.
I'm all for getting a fair price. I'm just questioning, did, is this jumping way high? Doug, you, Doug knows more about this.
Yeah, I mean, what I would say.
Is that number, does that number look reasonable or excessive?
Well, the, the, the issue is, one, you have to look at supply versus demand. Um that's, that's a primary driver in most counties. Like Orlando, their, their demand so far exceeds their supply that uh county, city. What was that?
Oh, no, so he was asking where do we see Orlando? I just brought it up because I just know.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so I mean, Flavi just brought it up, but um there are some differences like in North Collier, they have some restrictions and they just put in turf fields, so on half. Um half their fields are now turf, so they charge a little bit more of a premium there. And some of their fields are only used for like game or tournament. They do limit usage on those fields quite a bit. Um what I would say is my feedback is my, for one, I don't, except for field one, I don't see a difference in field two, three, four and five. Um it's, there's, there's no difference. There might be, field two might be a little more desirable because the concession stand, however, the concession stand we don't even use. It's a public works building now. Um so even that cost, we need to look at whether that should be considered a recreational facility or part of the district now. Cause recreation, recreations, it's not a part of recreational use. So I would say let's standardize the fields, two, three, four and five. Let's just land on a price there. When I was looking at total cost, um I think it's the sheet that, that Chelsea handed out.
Sorry, I'm handing it out now. Sorry.
So if you look at this sheet, we are operating at about a twenty percent recovery uh on average. Uh it's about twenty percent for, for the field usage. The dog park, it's probably, I think it's twelve percent. Uh and that's based on, on an average. Um I think what I would do is look at what do we think is acceptable? Um in my opinion, amenities are never gonna be, you know, net zero uh from a revenue perspective. Um but I think we need to agree on what's, what we think is ideal. I don't think twenty percent is reasonable. I think we should be looking towards something closer to fifty percent. Um in order to get there, two things have to happen. One, we either raise fees or we reduce, you know, find ways to be more efficient in our, in our uh O and M costs. And I think there's a room in both places. Um in order to get to fifty percent, and I don't think that's something we would do in a year because that's a pretty big hike. Uh we would probably put some of these leagues out of business, but um I think we should look at a plan, uh let's say a three-year plan, five-year plan, whatever we think is reasonable to get us closer to a, you know, fifty percent balance. I think residents would appreciate that. So when I look at the proposed costs, I think where our decision is gonna be is what do we think? One, what percentage do we want to have balanced from a revenue to, from revenue to expense? Two, how long do we think we want to give ourselves to get there? And then three, what is the annual increase that we would do year over year in order to get us to that fifty percent? Um I think twenty-three dollars per field is, I mean, if you look at the numbers, it's on the low end. So we're, you know, one of the lowest rentals with typically our fields are in good shape. They're not that great right now. But if you go to anywhere in the county, you go to Bay Shore, you go to um Kelly Road, even our fields today are probably, you know, equal to uh what that standard is out there. I mean, maybe right now they're a little, little below where they should be, but in normal operating conditions, they're really good fields. Um I think the other thing is these fields, as much as we have tried to maintain them, you know, the, the turf, we're using the same turf we have since they were, since they were designed. And, and when they were designed, they probably didn't have turf specialists out there looking at the, the grade and the drainage and the turf. So we're, we're gonna have to do some maintenance on these over, over the next, you know, five years, because I don't think we're gonna spend the money to completely replace the sod, but there's some other things that Chelsea's looking at. So if you want my, my recommendation on this, I think we look at a plan, we, we land on a percentage that we feel is reasonable revenue over expense. We look at what's the time period we want to get there and then what's the acceptable increase annually in order to get us there?
So if I can explain the sheet real quick?
Why wouldn't we be able to just say if he's trying to, we're trying to get to fifty? Why don't we get to fifty in uh three years? Go twenty percent, thirty, forty, fifty?
Whatever, whatever the goal is, understanding parks and our amenities don't normally profit a hundred percent. Now, at private entities, clubs, they, they, they are, I mean, they're a business, but for a public amenity, for the community, very rarely are you gonna, if ever, make a, recover a hundred percent.
Well, if he's, if we're saying fifty is our goal, in three years, go twenty now and you go up ten percent every year and get to fifty.
So.
The only, hold on, the only caveat I would have to usage is, is probably having a separate cost for youth leagues versus adult leagues. Um because adults do tend to, to have more wear and tear. And if you're in an adult league, you're, I mean, you're, you're paying for that just like you would kids, but I think if there, if there was an area I would, I would increase price, it would definitely be the different, the difference between adult play and youth play. But.
Uh, my thing like right now, what concerns me is the amount of games are played on the youth for like per day versus the adults. So while adults, if they were playing the equal amount of games on the fields, then yes. But we are playing way more on the, on the youth side, on the, on one field. You know, on, by double, by probably quadruple really, like four games in, in one field on a day and which you would only have one on adult side. So yes, if they were playing equal amounts, but I, I just, and, and that's another thing. Like most of them have restriction of how many games they play. We don't. So not only we're in the lower end, we have no restriction. It's like come and get it up and play as much as you want, you know, so that's.
I don't, other, other counties don't do that. They don't, they don't put, there, there's not necessarily restrictions on on how many players are on the field and how much it's used. Now, some like North Collier does. They, they have restrictions.
Uh how many games? I think the ones I saw someone tell me that.
Hours of play.
Yeah, like actual, yeah, hours.
Yeah, but that's, uh, I, I, I'm not aware of that and, and that's very difficult to, to monitor. Um but I, I, I see what you're saying. I mean, we, we can't, we can't overcompensate revenue by having more people on the fields. Cause there's a, there's a negative impact to that. Yeah. Yeah, but and, and if we had turf fields, it wouldn't matter. You could play on them all the time. There, there's zero, practically zero maintenance on turf fields and wear and tear is, is minimal. The fact that our fields are twenty, almost thirty years old, you know, there's a problem there. You know, and, and we're not, uh, over the years, we, you know, we do the deep time, you know, stuff like that, but I, I don't, I don't know if, we're not gonna be able to get our goal if we cut back usage. I think in order to get where we need to be, we need to have a regular maintenance schedule. We can't do all of our maintenance over the summer. Because it, it's just, I, I, I think we need to come up with a better maintenance schedule to keep the fields in good shape year round. Because those fields are only leveraged probably two hours, two to three hours a day. They're, they're sitting unused from in the morning till about four o'clock till about maybe, well, actually during, during season practices don't even start till five thirty or six. So it's only three hours a day and then five hours on Saturday. So there's, there's plenty of rest. I think it really boils down to maintenance, in my opinion. When, when, when we get rain or when there's usage, when there starts to be damage, we don't fix the damage. We pour sand on it. Um and then it just gets worse and worse. So.
So what are the numbers we're talking about that's in red for league rental? What are we proposing them to change as a starting with a progression over a, a three-year period?
If you have the handout sheet, I can kind of go over this. It's a little rough. So just so everyone knows, our current fees are for gateway residents. It's for field rentals, it's ten dollars an hour. For non gateway residents, it's forty dollars an hour.
Forty?
Forty. And then the lights are um.
They're thirty.
Thirty. So.
In addition to.
Yeah, thirty.
Yes, yes, in addition to. Okay, so if you see where it says actual hours rented on this sheet.
Yes.
Um you'll see across, we've got the different rates that you see on the screen. So if, if we had charged fifty dollars an hour for sixteen eighty-two, you get eighty-four thousand one hundred. Same thing in twenty, so you see the difference. And then below that is the percent increase. Which would be the numbers that you guys are looking at. So if you went thirty dollars, well, it's down, I don't know, but.
Percent increase or is that an actual dollar?
It should be, that doesn't seem right because.
Doesn't look like it's going the right direction.
No, my formula must be wrong. Yeah, well, listen, if we were a Laura, it'd be a lot more cleaner.
So what, what you're, what you're. If I looked at it the other way and started at the right side, at the thirty dollars, if I started at the right side at the thirty dollars, what you're saying is, is that that is at a thirty percent increase?
That's what, that's what it, what, yes.
And then if we did each year for three years to get to fifty and drop out one of those in, in betweens, where maybe we go to thirty-eight, uh forty-four and fifty, something like that.
Yeah, I mean, what it boils down to is we need about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of revenue a year to be at fifty percent. Right now, we're at sixty, average, let's say around sixty K. We need about a forty, between forty, forty-five percent increase at over whatever period to get us to our goal of fifty percent, you know, shared expenses with revenue. The question is, how do we?
Pick that number out for three years from now and work backwards.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I would do.
Do that. Just pick that number out. If, if the number is a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
It fluctuates, depends on the hours rented.
Yeah, but that, but the hours rented should be, that should be an average anyway, right? I mean, you take that, that should work itself out.
Doug, how did you get that one thirty-five figure?
I, I took the average, uh, average, um, average expense over three years, which is two, two hundred seventy thousand. But actually it's two, two seventy, two five two. And just divided it by half. Alright, so that's one thirty.
As our projected number three years out and then work backwards.
Yeah, I mean, because that's where we should be. I think if we're at fifty percent and then also if we can get better, more cost effective with our maintenance, then we can, you know, that's, that's great. I mean, I think fifty percent from a resident's perspective would be acceptable because it's still a public, you know, for residents, public use. The leagues offer a service. So I, I mean, I think fifty percent is reasonable, especially when we're at twenty percent. And I think even twenty percent is, is probably a stretch for some years.
If, if you look at the twenty-two and just say that's a base point and you look at the uh, the expenses versus the revenue and then the net, the differentials, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, wouldn't that be a good target point to get to?
Yeah, I mean, if you say twenty twenty was an anomaly because we did lights and all that stuff, I mean, if you really took twenty-one and twenty-two.
I mean, there was a lot of things in there.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if you took twenty-one, twenty-two, that, it takes that average from two seventy down to two thirty-five. Two thirty-five divided by two, well, that's a hundred and seventeen. So if you want to, let's say one twenty, let's say a hundred and twenty thousand is, is our goal.
Yeah, then we're not so far off. And that seems like a reasonable way to get there, the three-year increase.
I have another problem with that.
So it's.
We can continue to monitor and know if we become more efficient.
So.
I don't know if there's a whole lot of wiggle room there, like in our maintenance costs, because I mean, it's not like we're doing a, a lot today. Um.
So, so if we go with that schedule, what is the amount that we start with this year as being the uh, the number?
So going backwards, if, if the goal was to get to a hundred and one twenty, and if we're averaging twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two hours rented and meet in the middle and just say eighteen hundred hours rented, we're at about sixty-seven dollars an hour at fifty percent, which is where your goal is in three years. So we'd have to back.
Back off?
Yes.
Okay, what would, what would those numbers be in the three years?
Forty, eighteen hundred. So for about, for non-residents, we're at forty dollars an hour right now, for non-residents.
I thought they were ten right now.
For residents, they're ten. For non-residents, they're, they're forty.
Okay.
Two and forty-four?
Just go in the middle of those two, sixty-seven.
Just be a third, a third, a third.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nine dollar, a nine dollar, nine, eighteen twenty-seven.
Every year.
Nine bucks an hour. So it'd be forty, forty-nine dollars.
Makes sense.
Forty-nine, forty-nine dollars.
First year, first year would be what?
Forty-nine dollars an hour.
And then the second year would be what?
Add nine bucks onto that.
Uh, that, that doesn't seem right to me.
You start at forty-nine.
And then sixty-seven.
But your, but your electrical cost should stay, hey, but your electrical stock cost should stay flat.
Forty-nine, fifty-eight and sixty-seven. We ain't talking about nine, eight, seven and four, five, six.
So then.
Makes sense to me.
So then also because there's costs, FPL, I don't, I think I sent it to you.
Well, this is close enough though. This is.
So the proposal for the lights was to go up seven dollars an hour, less than. So I think I just heard Doug suggesting keep it at thirty.
Yeah, because elec- electric, unless the price of electricity goes up, you know, we're not trying to, we're not really trying to make money off electricity.
I, I think that the email said ten, ten percent. That's nine point seven. Yeah.
They're changing the lights. Bump the lights up. Thirty-seven, forty.
Yeah, just pass it. We're passing through the increase in costs.
So you want to go to thirty-three dollars an hour for the lights instead?
Yes.
We wouldn't want to get down.
Yeah, thirty-three? It's thirty right now. So thirty-three, we just pass along whatever FPL needs. Okay.
So just look at, look at the numbers. Let's make sure that, you know, we're trying to get to our goal, but you know, let's, at least the first, this first year, I mean, the, the leagues have to, have to adjust to it too. So we need to give them a little bit of a lead in on that. I mean, we, I, I don't want to, I don't want to price them out of being able to.
Is this what we net out as Facilitron's not a cost factor?
They, they charge ten, the ten percent and that's gonna be passed through to the end user.
That's totally different to what our rate scheduled. This is what, our rate scheduled, what we're gonna, Facilitron's gonna bump that up to cover themselves. So what we're saying sixty-seven, it's seventy-four.
Ten.
Yeah. Ballpark. Yep.
Okay.
I don't have any problem with that.
Well, I don't either. If we get it at the end of the year, we don't, the sole try.
The issue is, is that we can always readjust this next year or the year after that if, if things change. But at least it's a goal and starting point.
The, the goal is to include this each year when we do the budget so we can, or designing things and.
So the, the reasoning why we tried to get this in front of you as soon as possible, because I know I've been in contact with at least two of the leagues that they're, they're waiting to push out registration until they know what your costs are here. So now I can take.
Now we got it.
It, it's not in stone until we go through the fee schedule and get it approved through the public hearings, but I can at least tell them this is, this was the agreed upon numbers as of today.
So what's the anticipated public hearing date? There's a ten-day advance advertisement in the newspaper.
I would like to do it as soon as we possibly could, so that way Facilitron can start to implement these, because I know we've already had a league um request and pay seventeen thousand dollars for next spring. So this, this would address, this would, this would impact their request, which we've not approved.
We could make the June first, because again, it's a ten-day lead time.
Oh, perfect.
So if you can get the schedule to me, so I can then compare the notice, get it in the paper. And what would be the effective date? The date of adoption or?
Please, yes.
Okay, so I'll work with Laura next week on it then, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is, is the board okay with the June first adoption? That way the leagues know for certain.
I got a problem with June first. Adoption and effective date.
Yes. Okay, was there any other questions with the fee schedule?
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and all fields will be one set price.
Do you want to have field one, which is essentially a half field, at the same rate as the full fields?
No, that has to be, that has, that has to be a lower cost.
No, yes, but then, then two, three and four and five will be the same.
Should be the same, yeah.
Yes.
And I've got to switch phones, so I'll, I'm gonna drop and then dial back in.
So what's, what's the price differential between one and two, two, five? Twenty percent?
One and two, two, five, wait, what?
Well, you're saying one's gonna be.
Five will all be one price.
Full price, because they're full fields. Field one is kind of a half a field.
Okay, got you, got you.
So if, for instance, two, three, four and five. So if, for instance, two, three, four and five is fifty, the field one should be twenty-five or thirty?
Or half, I would have done that. It's half a field and half of the cost.
So why don't we just leave it at the thirty bucks that's on here right now?
And then the.
All the other ones are fifty?
All the other ones are forty-nine.
Forty-nine.
And the annual commons pool pass, non gateway.
Do you wanna do fifty?
No, no, no.
We can keep it nice and even and run it up to fifty.
Annual commons pool pass, non gateway rest, fifty, way low.
That's what I was thinking. I'm looking at the dog park and, you know, a hundred and fifty dollars for non-residents to use the dog park. And then the non-residents for the pool, fifty dollars a year, I think that's low. I mean, I'm thinking ten dollars a month, that's a hundred and twenty dollars a year for non-residents for the pool.
Is everybody good with that?
I go with that.
I mean, ten dollars, ten dollars a month, you know, for an amenity that they don't have, it's not.
We'll send them to the dog park.
Especially in the summer, there's not.
I mean, I'm just looking at the difference. We're charging them a hundred and fifty for the dog park and we're charging, yeah. Okay, so then we do one twenty.
Anything else? You didn't move it up? Come on, ready? There you go.
Good job, love.
So we'll put the conference room rental back to twenty-five, is that what I heard earlier?
No, nothing with the admin. Go back to recording fees.
They're gonna be actual.
Actual recording fee and staff time, okay. It's staff time after, with, what do you say, after half an hour, right? We bill them. So the first half an hour is free, and then anything after that. Right, right, right. Nothing is free. Um, and then the bathroom cleaning fee and, so that, I have questions regarding that.
Yes.
So then, okay. The bathroom cleaning fee for the rentals really, none of that was incorporated on the fee schedule, that was only fields. Is that what you're saying, we're saying, only the fields? Okay.
This has always been a separate charge.
But it's been a, it's not been a fee, it's been a deposit that they get back at the end of the year.
Doesn't make sense, cause we're paying.
So that was my question. Okay.
Well, the, the, the twenty-five dollars, so like, if we have somebody, a, a gateway family that wants to rent a field and the, um, area for the playground for a birthday party, they would pay twenty-five bucks for the bathroom cleaning, since they're bringing additional folks to the fields. And then the league's the same thing, so it's thirty dollars, three hundred dollars to use the lease.
And then we'll, like, so let me, let me just walk through the process. So I rented a, this pavilion. My expectation is if I'm gonna pay this twenty-five, that it will be clean when I get there, because I think there is also an opportunity for cleaning.
Yeah, I, I, I wanna take that in-house. So I think we have better control over our cleaning services if we take that in-house and make sure.
With the, with the current staff that we already have, not adding any additional staff, okay.
I'm, I'm happy with it.
Alright, so we'll make those changes and get it to Tony for the June first, uh, public hearing.
Oh, I had one question. The cancela- uh, non-refundable cancellation fee, cancellation within twenty-four hours. That, that means if it's not weather related, correct?
Yes.
I mean, if we have a hurricane coming in and they haven't canceled it. Correct.
Yes.
Okay, so if we cancel it, it's okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And then I'll just make one last note on here, the instructor agreement we talked about last time with the, um, pool, the Tori Ulmer from the pool. And you'll see the seventy-thirty split, um, so we're working through the agreement with her and hopefully, um, can get that wrapped up and she can start uh, instructing at the pool soon.
But that's not just for the pool, that's for. I know the dog park. Or anything else, okay.
Do your training classes there?
Training classes for the past.
Do you have a dog?
No.
I need a dog.
Alright, so, uh, we wanna motion.
I move to approve the fee schedule as discussed.
My staff to advertise for public hearing, advertise the fees, the fee schedule, they have to make the amendments.
Thank you for talking out of Tony's mouth.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second for Bob.
Well done, Carol.
Thank you.
Doug, did you need, Doug, trying to say something?
Yeah, just, just real quick, I was trying to get a discussion in for we, we approve, but, um, if our stance is like with the fields, if we wanna get up to a fifty percent revenue share, we were at twelve percent with the dog park. And we didn't really talk about that. So I think if we're gonna set a standard, we, you know, usage is, is, usage and expense is much greater with, with the soccer field, but we're getting more requests from, you know, from the dog park to resaw it on a regular basis and, and gate and all this kinda stuff, so we might just wanna, you know, keep that in, in our mind when we're addressing that as well. But we didn't take that same methodology with the dog park, as far as how we're gonna associate fees and increases.
Wanna go back and?
Address that next time.
Yeah, we don't have to do it now, maybe staff could just take a look at that when we go to final approve, there could be a recommendation, if it's, if it's different.
Is the dog park expenses not dramatic?
It was resolded last year, that was the biggest.
So more of the eighty and took more of the forty. Okay.
So, continuing on with fee discussions, um, this next item, so the staff is reviewing, um, all fees across the district. Um, and so utilities has been reviewing the fees that we, we charge. Um, and so this item is more informa- I think it's, can you scroll down, is this, the, this, this item is informational in nature. Um, do you wanna, Leslie, you wanna come up and just touch on it?
Leslie Rictor, Vic Utility Billing Manager. This is a rough draft. Um, we're still working on changes and adding things to this schedule. I'm still waiting on feedback from the utility staff to clarify some things and put things on here. So hopefully, um, next month we'll have, um, a better firm schedule to present. But it's information only. I did compare rates, um, against eight local utilities. Um, so that we're in line with what, kind of what everyone else is doing. It's not in that attachment, but I have the data available.
When was the last time we had an, an increase?
This is the, yeah. So this is, these are part of Schedule C. Fees, other fees, and I think the last time they looked at proposed changes was two thousand and twelve.
Wow.
So this is separate from the monthly water bills and separate from connection fees. Schedule C has its own miscellaneous charges.
This gets into all those ones that we several years skipped and didn't charge people for.
Yes, so, um, you know, we're up for any recommendations or any notes that you want to, um, supply staff with. Um, but our biggest areas of concerns are related to customer service and enforcement or correction action.
And that item will be next. But this is, um, again, we're, we're reviewing everything, um, and like Leslie said, this was from two thousand and twelve, this may warrant, uh, further consideration, but if you have any comments that, or, or feedback that you could give us now, that could help guide staff, um, we'd appreciate that.
I think, this is one that I think we need to simplify because it is way too complicated.
Yeah.
So again, this item was just for informational purposes, you know, w- we will come back, um, to you all with, you know, staff recommendations, but uh, we wanted to get this in front of you, so you had an opportunity to, um, provide some feedback or insight, um, while staff is working through some of these items.
And I think one of the challenges is, is if it's not in the rulebook, then technically we're not allowed to charge them. Um, so those are kind of reasons why we wanna update this.
Does the agreement with Lee High, proposed agreement, does that impact this at all with the water usage? There would be a standalone bulk.
We may, we don't have a bulk, I don't believe we have a bulk rate in here, so we would have to include that as part of, um, any amendments.
And the same thing if we go with the city of Fort Myers.
Yes.
They turn it up, okay.
Yeah.
Well, it would be a scheduled rate.
A change, yes.
So we get our water from Lee County.
Yes, ma'am.
And then we pump it out to
our residents.
Our guys.
Yep.
So, um, you're suggesting an increase because Lee County is increasing, or because we have additional expenses to pump it out?
So we have, we have a couple different things going on right now. Glad you brought up, brought up Lee County, because I'll get to that in a second. So these are fees and charges, and Leslie, correct me at any point. These are fees and charges that we have as operating our utility. That's separate from what we, what we bill to the end user via rate study. This is.
They're not volumetric.
They're, thank you, they're not volumetric. Um, these haven't been reviewed in some time, and so we wanted to take a look at these. Now, on the other side of that.
But before you leave, is this somebody coming into the community new that this would apply?
Everybody.
All residents.
Basically, I think these are more operational expenses.
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Okay, well, okay.
Operational, yes, operational in nature. Now, let's jump to volumetric side of it. Lee County, at their Board of County Commission meeting just this week, proposed and approved a, um, stat- their staff to advertise and host a public meeting at the end of June with a proposal of an eight percent rate increase of their potable system across the board for the next five years. That impacts us.
Eight every year.
Eight percent every year for the next five years.
They were one time talking about a staff deal, so they didn't pass that.
They decide.
Straight eight.
Yes.
And that's just for water, it's a potable water, not surge.
So that's what we're gonna have to pay.
If it's gonna be a pass-through, yeah. So we'll pay and unless we wanna add to that, we just pass through the cost.
I'm sorry. So that additional eight percent next year, our costs are going to go up eight percent.
Yes, yes.
For buying that water.
Rate, yes.
And then before we take that water and ship it to home ABC over there, we, we need to add these costs on.
These are different. Uh, the Lee County cost is, is volumetric.
Right.
Gallon to use it. This is based upon how much a meter costs. The labor cost to connect a meter, new fees, light fees.
Okay, then go back to the volumetric thing.
Scroll down to the next.
So we don't add a charge on?
Well, that's.
We just pass it on at what we pay?
So the district has, it, three or four years ago, had a rate study done by Raftellus. And we are on year four of that rate study. When they do those rate studies, they come in, they look at your system, they look at your proposed capital projects, your future planning, development, et cetera. They look at comps around you and they see where, where your utility lies. And your cost of operating, how much, cause an enterprise or a utility is, it has to be self-funded.
Okay.
So they propose a, a rates, a, a rate increase, and we are on year four of five rate increase. Our last rate increase went effective January first, but it, our residents did not see it on until their March bill. Cause we bill every two months. So, in the interim, Lee County has said, we have, Lee County, if I'm Lee County, they're saying between Ian and between all the development elsewhere and, throughout the county, they need a rate increase to cover their capital costs, their operating costs, et cetera. They have not had a rate increase for over a decade. So what their Board of, the Board of County Commission did this week, said, and, and the county hired Raftellus to come in and do this assessment on their behalf. And Raftellus has had two recommendations. One was either a, a five-year, eight percent increase each year, or a tiered option, starting at twelve and going down for the next five years. The Board of County Commission recommended to their staff to advertise for a public hearing at the end of June with an effective date of July first for a eight percent rate increase for all users.
Is this water only, or water and wastewater?
I believe it's water, but I ha- I, I have to get confirmation from the county.
Okay.
So it doesn't matter if you're Joe Schmo resident, that gets water from Lee County, or if you're Gateway Services and you get your water in bulk. They're going up eight percent.
Okay.
Now, they, just like us, they have to have a public hearing.
Right.
Two hearings. So we'll know by the end of June if it gets approved, and then it would become effective July first. Now, what that does to us is we had our rate study done based on our needs and our improvements and our capital stuff. If that eight percent comes through, our margin of funding for those items reduces the eight percent. Or we choose to pass that eight percent cost off to the end user, which would be our residents.
Well, the eight percent is a percentage of our total cost. Just, in other words, we're just buying raw water.
Correct.
That's a component of our rate study.
Yes.
So it's not a straight eight across, percent across the board, it's a percentage of that, but it's eight percent to us for that line item.
Yes.
That we pay that.
Okay, so help me understand this. GSCDD pays five dollars for one gallon of water from Lee County. Does, and does GSCDD then send a bill to homeowner Tony for five dollars? Or does GSCDD add another buck on and sends Tony a bill for six dollars? Do we have an interim charge in there?
I don't. We would have to put that on as a pass-through rate, and I'm not sure if that goes on Schedule C or A.
No, because we operate as our own utility. So once it comes through that master meter off of Daniels, all of the distribution lines and, and up to the meter of Tony's property, we own that system and we have to operate and maintain that system between staff, maintenance, repairs, et cetera. So it's not a one-to-one pass-through, like we.
Yeah, there's not a justification for that.
No.
Okay.
Cause we have.
So we have to add something on.
Yes.
And so you're saying this, what you're proposing here is what you wanna add on? Or?
No, not this case.
Separate issues.
We, we need to have somebody advise us on this. The only circumstance where it would be a straight eight percent add-on to what we've got is we, if we were just mysteriously to have a same eight percent cost increase. And that's not gonna happen.
Typically, to, for all of our projects and then for the system to deliver the water to your house, not for the actual water itself, the eight percent would affect the actual. So these fees are for the meters, the meter boxes, the valves, all of the stuff it takes to get the water to you.
Okay.
So that's what this would cover. And then the eight percent from Lee County is just the water.
The volumet- volumet.
So, oh, so, okay, I understand. This is, this is the system. This is the cost of the system to bring it to you.
In the ground and maintain the pipes and the valves.
So besides, besides the system, does GSCDD add an administrat- I'll call it an administrative cost?
That's included in here.
That's in our, that's in our other costs to make up our total rate. So those, those could go up.
How often does a consumer see this cost? yearly?
On Schedule C, these operation costs occur as they occur, so is that what you're referring to?
How, how often does it, by bill, whatever kind of bill?
The bill is billed every bi-monthly. Built.
Every two, every two months, yeah.
Every two months.
So if you've got a five-eighth inch line, go back to that one truck, and you're gonna, you're spending ten dollars, uh, for the minimum water, twelve fifty.
These are not current.
Every few months, well, but just that's typical. Yeah, okay.
Once you get, what was attached is all A, B, and C.
Right.
So you, you just need for purposes, what Leslie's staff proposes is just paying you Schedule C.
Oh.
The current, no, those are not the current schedules A and B, those, those are very.
Yeah, it's just business.
This line item is only for Schedule C information only.
Present time.
Okay.
Which affects the way that it, the stuff, how we deliver everything to you.
Well, that sewer is gonna be a big one as to what they do on that.
I have some ideas. We'll talk.
Yeah, we need to know the answer to that. That's where big bucks are at.
Yeah, the money's in sewer.
Yeah, big bucks in sewer.
So this.
Is it your wholesale bulk rate that's going up for retail?
I, I was told across the board, everything. I think it's everything.
They, they said basically, any, anybody who gets water from them, it was a better.
They need to give out, they have no surprise.
I would assume that they do.
We, we have a separate bulk agreement for them on water and wastewater.
Yeah. So, again, looking at everything, putting fresh eyes on it, this operational component of the utility, we wanted to review and to make sure we're in current day. So this, again, is just information review. If you have any comments, please let us know.
So we're gonna try to stay competitive.
Yes. So.
Go back to the.
So, so we're not increasing this.
We are changing and, and we are adding some charges to clarify some things. And on the spreadsheet.
Do you wanna, do you wanna spreadsheet?
So permit, uh, the, it begins with the permit criteria fees, those I would need direction from Tetra Tech or engineering.
So as an example, so in the Permit Criteria Manual right now, it calls out for these items and, and take, take note, flat review charge, two hundred dollars. In permit, in the Permit Criteria Manual, correct me if I'm wrong, it calls for the engineer and the district council's recoupment of their charges. So if Joe Schmo Development comes in and they apply, it's a pass-through. Now, it doesn't account for my time, her time, her time, any staff time to review these, and we, we spend quite a bit of time doing that. So we wanna make sure we're, we're recouping, it doesn't account for, does it account for Tetra Tech's review time in the field? It doesn't account for our field staff's.
Not ours, but Tetra Tech.
It, it accounts for like Wyatt going out and doing inspections like out by Santa Lou's, but if Isaac goes out and inspects, we don't recoup that, those dollars. So we, that's one example of, of something operationally that we would like to address. You wanna keep going through, through them?
Okay.
We're, we're, we're covering pass-through costs that are here for not covered.
Yeah.
Right. Um, the next section would be related to customer service, um, just one revising deposit language and updating cost for hydrants.
Okay, so these numbers that are in front of us are what it is today.
One column says current, those are what we currently cha- charge. Proposed in the blue is what's new or proposed to change. Okay. Um, disconnection for non-payment, that's a new item after hours. We do get several calls after hours for people wanting to have their water turned on. There is added cost for for our staff to having to go out there, including mine, because I'd have to verify payment. From water. So we don't have that option, so now we do have that option. It is, it does compare to what other utilities are charging. Um, Ave Maria charges one fifty, Benita is one thirty-five, Pana Gorda charges ninety, so it's in line with what other people are doing.
So under the proposed, do you feel confident that you have addressed all the additional ex- expenses that were not addressed previously?
Dollar amount, I have a spreadsheet to calculate how I got that total, so I, I account for vehicle overtime rate, um, staff time, um, and any material.
So you're suggesting that we go forward with the proposed column? And advertise?
Not right now, we still have some changes. Not right now, cause we, we're still reviewing the entire list, but yeah, that is, this is for information.
To get there.
Right.
And, and for, for your review and then if you have any comments or feedback based on what we have or what you're seeing, if there's a no change, et cetera, so it's a work in progress.
No, it's okay. I have one. So I went back to the, the same theory of one is on ca-, on call and they have to turn it on and turn it off. So turn on and off request by customer.
Down below is.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's a twenty-five dollars to go there, turn it off, like let's say my, uh, my.
During the day, your irrigation's off, we charge you twenty-five dollars to go off.
Okay, what if it's, if it's Saturday and Sunday? Shouldn't that be a different increase? Cause there would have, kind of the same theory that you applied for reinstating water, potable water to a resident if we're going to pay more for somebody to go on call on a Saturday or Sunday because they cannot.
Yeah, um, I did the additional line item underneath, says after hours and weekends.
Uh. And that will be the same for master meters and individual?
Um, technically, yes, we're gonna go out there.
Just by customer, yeah.
And then did we handle, did we take care of the, uh, fire hydrant?
Backflow with wool plumbing?
Whatever you, whatever you thought I was saying, uh, the last time.
The fire, so that'll get into the next section with regards to, um, enforcement, but, um.
So what was the, if you wanted, I never actually get to ask you what was.
Yeah, so there was a, um, a business within the community that their backflow had been leaking for quite a, quite a while, um, and we don't have a meter to measure exactly how much water was lost because of that leaky backflow. Um, and so it got to the point where we had to get South Trail involved, um, and threaten fines and enforcement action if they did not resolve it because that business kept patching their backflow. And it, it's, it was to the point where the fire department said, no, you're gonna replace the whole backflow.
Was the backflow on our side of the meter or their side?
It's on the fire line, it's their side.
Sorry?
It was on the fire line, so it's on their side.
On their side.
Yes. So, um, that is just one of the, one of the nuances that have come up as part of this review. Um, and what teeth, if anything, do we have to address this? Because ultimately, the district and our residents are going to take up the cost on the true up, so.
Sure.
Um, it's not right, and so we wanna make it right.
Uh, did you wanna scroll back up to customer?
Yeah, so this is the, this is the, okay.
Customer, yeah, where it says deposits and.
Yeah.
Yeah. So another area that, um, was proposed for a change is delay fee. Many other utilities charge a flat rate, ten dollars or ten percent. So we're just looking for one point five or five dollars, whichever is greater. And that's, um, pretty much in line with what Lee County Utility and Benita do currently. Lean processing, we have a lot of fees or administrative costs for collections and tracking, so we wanted to clarify that. Scroll down. That's pretty much, right now, the major changes with cus-, related to customer service. Then below the next section is enforcement. Yeah, scroll down.
So you'll see there's a lot of blue that's proposed.
These covers things that are right now we're exposed to, that we generate no revenue, but we incur cost.
Right.
Yes.
So we have people tampering with meter locks once their pa-, once they're, you know, shut off or non-payment. So wanna obviously implement fifty dollar fee and then second offense, it would be seventy-five dollars. Backflow violation.